Yeah, I like the, yeah, I like the.
Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, January 12th, 2012 meeting of the Planning Board. I just want to take a couple of minutes and go around the room and introduce the members of the board for the folks in the audience this evening. I'm probably going to take things out a little bit out of order to take care of a couple of simple matters before we get into what might be some questions that you might have about particular proposals. Brian, would you lead us off by going around the room, please?
Brian Rose, Planning and zoning administrator.
Phil Devance, Selectman.
John Heikel.
Mark Morgan.
Dale LeBruck, Recording Secretary.
Alan Jayton, Chair.
Barbara Griffin, Member.
Carlos Adams.
Carl Foley, Alternate.
Just joining us here is?
Steve Dunn, Alternate.
Steve Dunn, Alternate. We have a full board this evening with the alternates, and we will be making decisions on these items tonight. I'd like to just do a couple of housekeeping matters first, and that has to do with the minutes of December 8th and December 15th. We had postponed the vote on December 8th for those members of the board to review and read. And also in your new package, you've got the minutes of December 15th, members of the board.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 8th?
Second.
Motion by Carlos is seconded by Barbara. Any amendments or corrections to the December 8th minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
One abstention. Chair votes affirmative. How about the minutes of December 15th?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Carlos, seconded by Barbara. Any amendments, editing, or whatever of the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Chair votes affirmative. I think probably everybody had an opportunity to review the letter from our, Brian referenced the Manos Pizza and Wings, and the Riverview Tobacco Company. Are there any comments on either one of those two decisions by our planning department? Okay, seeing none? Do you need any vote or consensus, Brian, or just there's no comment from the members of the board? Also, in our packet, I have letters from the industrial corporations stating support for the zoning petitions, which we'll see at a later time this evening. What I am going to do is, I'm in new business this evening. We're going to take up just one item. Brian, do you have anything that you want to bring for the board? In advance? Is Megan coming over?
Yes, I did talk to Megan.
Okay. Just another housekeeping thing this evening. If you're going to speak this evening, I wish you to come up and be seated. Our microphone for the audience is currently fuzzy. And I'd like to be able to hear you and at the same time, record your presentation and the questions you might have with the members of the board. Brian, you have the floor on map 18, Lot 62-1, Site Plan Review and Hearing, and Conditional Use Permit Hearing for a proposal to construct two 24-unit apartment buildings, 48 units total, Anacost Realty applicant and St. Anselm's College owner, Moose Club Park Road Zone Commercial. Why don't you have a, take a moment to set yourself up? Are there any members of the audience here for this particular acceptance hearing this evening for the apartments in Moose Club Park? Okay, yes, you'll have an opportunity to speak, but I also believe that this will be accepted and continued to a date certain. We're not prepared to make any of your presentations other than a quick introduction of their proposal this evening, which we saw as a conceptual about a month and a half ago. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the residences at Moose Club Park. It's basically the fifth phase of the Abingdon Square project, as was previously presented approximately five years ago to the town, back in 2007, I think. The applicant is basically proposing to build two 24-unit apartment buildings, that'd be 48 units in total, as part of this mixed-use project. The plan was submitted, and all the documents, drainage report, traffic study, all the associated documents that are required were submitted approximately a month ago. And fees have been paid and everything. Notice was given to the public for this public hearing. And the applicant has requested some waivers. However, those waivers aren't really needed for acceptance of the project. They're waivers that would be associated with the approval of the project. So I don't believe that those would be necessarily needed for action tonight.
So the waivers are more design issues than they are as far as the completeness of the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah? You have a question?
Are you finished?
I, let me just get through the rest of this and then...
Okay.
I did state in my report that the plan that I felt it may have a regional impact. But when I had originally looked at that, it was due to possible trips in and above what the requirement was. And that's the reason why they were required to submit a traffic study. However, in looking back at previous approvals by the planning board, they actually did not determine the, a regional impact. And it, it's maybe a stretch for determining regional impact, just because it's not that close to Manchester. It's probably about a mile away from the Manchester borderline, so either way, the determination could be made, but in going back and looking at that, it, I don't think it's as much of an issue, so if the board wanted to go against my written recommendation on my report, you are more than welcome. So, I'll, I'll just put that one out there. The, a few of the approvals, when, when the approval goes to the planning board, when the project goes to the planning board for approval, there will be some conditional use permits needed as part of the approval to make it approvable. One of them is that there's a conditional use permit needed to make any multifamily structure be able to have more than 12 units in it. Currently, the rule is no more than 12 in a multifamily building. Another conditional use permit would be to allow the square footage of the residential project, part of the project, to exceed that of the commercial part of the project in a mixed-use project. Those two conditional use permits would be required prior to being able to approve a project for this, approve this project anyway. The, number eight, the one that I stated about the, I'm sorry, I had one about the driveway.
Seven.
Number seven, I'm sorry. That one, the applicant talked to me after I had written the report and sent it out. The plan, I guess the planning board had discussed this at the last time, and because this driveway area had been done as an easement prior to when the residential driveway went in next to it, that the planning board wouldn't necessarily have to determine that that's a needed waiver. So, I'll let that to your discretion, but the other thing is, is it's been brought up that this was listed as Phase Number Five of the project. And we obviously have had two phases, one of which has already been built out of order. But I'm not sure if the planning board has any concerns about building them out of order. But that's one of the concerns that, that has been brought up, and so that it's there for discussion. The TRC Technical Review Committee will be discussing this tomorrow and reviewing the plans with the applicant. So we'll be going over in depth all of the plan review details and concerns that we have of any regulations that need to be met or possible things that the applicant should do to make their project better in any way possible. So, basically tonight, what I'm looking for is for the planning board to find on regional impact. I would recommend actually, after reviewing my, my previous recommendation, that it has no regional impact. And then accept the plan for review and continue it. And I also spoke to the applicant about the date to continue it. I had originally put February 23rd, 2012. They would like that to be moved up two weeks to the seventh, the February 7th.
Sixth.
Sixth, I'm sorry, February 6th meeting. And they expect that they would be able to get through all the comments and submit revised plans in that, in that time, so I'll leave that to them. With that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Thank you. Phil?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a concern on it, and I guess the question is the one about the conditional use, about the exceeding the commercial portion of this. Because it seems to me that the, this is part of the, if this is part of the entire project, I think if we consider how much commercial has been developed or built out on this project, we only have one commercial involved in it, and my understanding is that we're supposed to have some more commercials. So my question is, is this development too soon, which goes to a point that Brian brought up about the fact that it's Part Five of the project?
Okay. Barbara?
I would just note that that is the conditional use permit that I put an asterisk next to. I have some issues with it. I was not part of the board when this plan originally was approved, but I understood it was a phased plan, and there was much discussion about the development of the commercial portion as compared to the residential portion. And I know that there have been some changes in subdivisions since the original approval that frankly was brought forward at the owner's request. So, anything that's been done has been done with full knowledge of the original approval. And I would, I wouldn't expect the detail in the presentation tonight, and I know the applicant wants to do the presentation. We're anticipating it's going to be continued, and then we can get on to the zoning changes that are, that we're here for a public hearing. But this applicant obviously wants to move along with this development. And I will want to know, after your technical review committee meeting, exactly what the phases were, what the square foot of approvals were, and how this compares to it. Because my recollection is there was expected to be substantially more commercial development on the site before any residential units were developed. And the fact that this is a different lot, to me, does not impact the plan approval. So I'm just going to need that question answered as to the entire plan after your technical review.
Other members of the board?
I was on the board when it was approved. And it went through several phases, but it was a mixed-use development without subdivision lines.
I remember.
And it, it was approved with specific uses, specific sizes, and specific densities of residential housing, recognizing that they did have access from Moose Club Park. I think that was one of the other constraints at the time. Was the proof of that easement. Given those circumstances, they came back at a later date when Rite Aid was being built, and also when Neighbor Works was going to try to do their housing project there to subdivide the property along the similar phase lines so that the ownership could be conveyed to Neighbor Works. And I'm not sure who else retains ownership of the other segments at this point in time, but that was a subsequent approval to allow the, the building of the housing. There was no change at that time to the density on the rear lot or the rear portion of this mixed-use development. I don't know specifically what was stated in the minutes during the presentation by the applicant. And I would think this board might be interested in obtaining what was stated by the applicant at that time, just to assure each member of this board as to exactly what was presented and approved. And subject to that, I'm not particularly in favor of moving forward with any presentation at the present time. Any other members of the board got anything to say? Phil?
Well, I concur with both you and Barbara. Being a member on the board when this was first brought in for the Rite Aid project, and we had the, the initial preliminary application and presentation, and it was asked what the board wanted to see. I remember specifically that the board wanted to see commercial development in there. And from what I recall of this project, because I was off the board for about a year when that subdivision, that additional request that you spoke of came forward. So, my recollection is that there's only one commercial property that's in there, and that all the other ones are, haven't, haven't materialized. And there's been more residential built in the back of the Rite Aid area, and now we're coming forward with this.
Well, I think that's, if I might note, I believe that's why there's number six in there for consideration. I think they realize that they have to get a conditional use permit to improve the square, to increase the square footage of residential development. And I think it's up to this board to judge that fact for what it is. And we may feel that there has been prior approvals, and none of those approvals are noted in this set of drawings, by the way. Are they? Nicole?
No, but we can add them.
Okay.
I do have them with me.
As with most cases, any subject approvals, variants that granted on this particular development need to be noted in the set of drawings.
Actually, I think that-
On the cover sheet.
On the cover sheet, okay. You can do that.
I'm, I'm prepared to, to, to move forward on this regional impact issue and, and move it as Brian has recommended.
So moved.
Second.
I have a, a motion by Barbara and a, a second by Phil.
Just to clarify, I'm, I underst, I'm, made a motion to find that it does not have regional impact.
Correct. That is correct.
I will withdraw my second.
That's what I clarify.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Barbara and a second by Mark. Okay, given that, is there any discussion on that motion? Yes?
Just a point of whether, since we have two alternates and only one will be voting tonight, are we just going to rotate?
Yes, sir. You first.
Does anyone want to start? Okay.
Since you spoke up.
I know.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All those opposed? Chair is opposed also. Two to five. Okay. Now, as to the acceptance proposed site plan for review and continue it to further consideration, is there any member of the public wishing to add any comments relative to this development? Understanding that you will have an opportunity to address any of your concerns in a detailed presentation that will take later, at a later date.
On February 6th, apparently.
Maybe. We don't have a motion yet. We're working on it. Seeing none, any other members of the board have any points of concern about the proposed project as it sits right now? Seeing none, and I would like to-
I don't, I wouldn't take that to say, mean that there are no concerns about the project as before the board. It's, you know, we understand there's going to be a presentation, and concerns may or may not be addressed, and then we can bring them up for discussion. I didn't want to take that silence to mean nobody has any concerns.
Okay, then I'll go back to the board, inquiry the board. Are you in, in the, in the interest of this project, we want to hear a presentation this evening?
I was-
Would you want to postpone that to the February 6th?
Can we complete the business for them if we hear it tonight, or do they have to come back on the 6th?
I suspect they'll be back more than the 6th also.
They have to do a technical review committee. They, they're trying to move it along, but it's not ready for acceptance, for voting. It's ready, there's been a recommendation, it's ready to be accepted, but it's not ready to be voted on yet. The plan still needs a-
I guess it's a big project, they're spending a lot of money. I don't want to hold them up unduly. So if we, you know, if it's going to, just are putting it off, really puts another obstacle in their way for two or three weeks. I'd rather give them opportunity to get what they would need to say.
Then I would, then I would limit it to the presentation and limit questions from the board at the end to a minimum.
Because we'll have an opportunity.
Because we'll have an opportunity at a later date.
Yep.
Nicole, you have the floor.
Just one clarification. Do you want me to go over the conditional use or waiver, or wait for that for February 6th?
Wait.
I, I think we're more interested in the content of the project, I think, this evening, and any of the things that you've done, both engineering-wise, that make the project a complete entity.
Because we had some discussions on the height and what you were going to decide to do, so if you can just do-
Just to give a brief overview of existing conditions, a lot of you are, are very familiar with the site. As you have previously said, this is a phase, this is Phase Five of a mixed-use development. This being Mass Road, Mystic Brook ran through the middle of it, Moose Club Park runs there. Also Shaw's, the Shaw's development is over on the west, and the Hanaford on the east. So where, we have a bunch of mixed uses around us. We have residential over here, we have Neighbor Works across the Brook and the Rite Aid and the commercial paths over here, as well, as well as the supermarkets on either side. The lot is about 8.8 acres. It's in the commercial district. The conditional use, just anybody, so everybody knows, that was approved March 13th, 2008. The access easement and the slope and grading easement for this property was actually dedicated in 2001. So that has been in place for this development for a while. We also have on top of the access and slope easement to benefit this property, we have a PS&amp;H easement that runs across, 100-foot PS&amp;H easement that runs across our property, as well as the conservation easement that runs along the Mystic Brook. Our proposed development is for two 24-unit buildings totaling 48 with two-bedroom units. There's a currently proposed 96 parking spaces for these units, which meets the regulations. And we have limited everything with every, all the development grading of this site to outside of the 100-foot conservation district. So, we understand that was really important to keep out of the easement and the conservation district itself. We are proposing a road, sorry, a driveway that goes through our access easement from Moose Club Park Road up into the site. One of the things that I want to point out is that I know that the commercial, everybody was talking about the commercial use. We do feel that having a commercial use here would not fit, as this is, you know, off of a residential street. And this is basically part of the residential community where it's separated by Mystic Brook from the commercial on the other side. So we have the driveway that runs up the slope here, and then we have the 96 parking spaces. Our utilities are Manchester Waterworks for the water. We did, I did meet out with Manchester Waterworks for the flow tests, and there was adequate pressure in the street. It's determined there was adequate pressure in the street for a line to come up to these two buildings. The other one is, we have PS&amp;H. We have been out on site with PS&amp;H regarding work within this easement. And the allowance to tie into the utility poles that are within the easement, we have gotten preliminary okay to tie that, tie into those poles rather than to go all the way down to Moose Club Park Road. The others are telephone and cable. Telephone and cable will be run up through the access and utility easement, as well as our sewer, which runs down the access and utility easement. Since this development meets AOT requirements, it disturbs over 100,000 square feet. We did have to do, we did have to meet their require, the state's requirements for drainage. The drainage on the site within the lot is a closed, we're proposing a closed drainage system. The closed drainage system, basically, your water will be captured by deep sump catch basins and then conveyed into two separate storm underground detention infiltration systems. So not only will this detain the water, but this will treat through infiltration. Now these, the specific underground detention system that we're using is a storm tech, which has an isolator row. The isolator row, what it does is, all the water is conveyed to the isolator rows within the system, and that allows your solids and your floatables to be removed before it is conveyed to the other chambers within the system. So it's a treatment device, a pre-treatment device, and a treatment device through the infiltration of the soils out here. The accessway, we had to do something a little bit different. The state, one of the, one of the accepted practices is a tree filter. Now, the tree filter, what it is, is it's a, you have 24 inches of crushed gravel, and then you have a soil filter, filter material above that, and it's encased with a fabric. So our water will go into these tree filters, and a tree is actually planted on top, and infiltrate into the ground and be treated by the soil mixture that's under, that's in that tree filter. So we have those all along this access easement to treat every bit of this pavement. And then at the end, just as a, just as a precaution, we understand that, you know, when they plow this, this may get filled up with snow, this, this swale. Because there is a driveway swale that runs across this, the, along the driveway. We understand that this may get filled with snow, so we have paved swales to each of these filters, just in case that, that water can't get to the swale. And on top of that, we have proposed a couple of catch basins, just in case that fails. Being New England and the snow we got last year, you never know. So we put the catch basins there. And because we're meeting AOT regs, we have to allow no water to leave the site in a 50-year storm. So, no extra water. Free equals post in a 50-year storm. So, out of these storm tech systems, there's zero water leaving, there's actually zero water leaving this closed drainage system out of a 50-year storm. And then there's zero water leaving this system onto the budding property in a 50-year storm. The way we've done that is we've added a couple of infiltrator storm tech systems, but this is- but this is just an isolator row. So we're detaining the water and letting it infiltrate a little bit more. We have excellent soils out there, it's all sands. We didn't encounter a water table, and we were down, I think, 22 feet. So it is really good soils out there. Snow storage, I know the Conservation Commission brought that up. Snow storage is proposed along the side here. It is on site layout plans, if you want to see it. It is proposed here. The one area that it is proposed along the conservation district, I do want to point out, is right here. However, there is a high spot right in this area. So any snowmelt actually drains back onto the pavement. It does not, it does not drain into the Mystic Brook because of that high point that sits higher than our, than our landing adjacent to the pavement there. As Brian said, there's two waivers for this. The two waivers, just to list them, they're for, it's for a driveway greater than 22 feet. We're proposing 24. And the second one for off-street loading requirements, where this isn't a commercial use, it's a residential use. We'll get into that more later on. And I believe you went over the conditional use before. So if there's any questions, we do have Bob Dival here to answer any traffic concerns, and my client, Dick Anagnost, is here too, to answer any questions specific to the buildings themselves.
Thank you, Nicole. Members of the board, do you have any questions? Phil?
Regarding the snow storage by the conservation district, you stated that it was elevated, not being down at the site. What is, is it possible that in the future that that might possibly be graded? Or does that need to be a condition of approval, that that raised area remain raised?
The raised area is actually in the conservation easement, so it can't be. And we have a construction fence, which is required along that, that is in the site prep, not even on the erosion control. We have it on the site prep that they have to put that construction, orange construction fence in before any earth moving.
But I guess my question is, the elevation, the elevated area, is that on the property of this project?
It is on the property, and it's within the conservation easement.
Going around the room? Megan?
I just had a quick thing. I didn't know if Nicole could speak to the retaining walls that are involved in the site.
Oh, thank you. Sure. We have several retaining walls for the site. This site, because of the elevation difference, because of the elevation difference on the site from Moose Club Park Road, we are proposing an 8% slope along this driveway. And in order to stay out of the 100-foot wetland buffer and the conservation easement, we are required to have a wall along here. The wall is going to be 270 feet long, 275 feet long, and its highest point is actually 20 feet. So it is a rather expensive wall. So we have that wall along here, but that was required to meet the requirements of the town. The other ones, we are proposing, I believe this one is about five feet along this building here. And that one is 110 feet long. Now the five feet, it's five feet max, and then it tapers off. And same thing with this, it's 20 feet max, and it tapers off on each end. And we are proposing two more wa, smaller walls along this side. This one being less than the five feet, and that one being only a couple of feet high. We were, we had to do that in order to stay out of the conservation easement. I know we came before you conceptually, and we showed disturbance within these areas. Since then, we rotated these buildings slightly and pushed this over. And that, because we pushed this building over, we needed that retaining wall. And it allowed us to rotate this building and pull this building up to stay out of the conservation easement. So we felt that was very important. So those are the retaining walls. The retaining walls that we're proposing, they're modular block walls. They're not the poured concrete, so they're, they are rather kind of aesthetic in nature, so.
Megan?
Just a follow-up to that. The, and I don't know if this is too technical of a question for now, then I'll deal with it tomorrow, TRC, but one of my concerns with the retaining walls is, are they going to be designed with like a geo-grid fabric that goes back into the roads because there's sewer, water, and all kinds of utilities out in the road? So I'm just wondering, I didn't know if that's something that, I know sometimes we put on plans, you know, shop drawings later, but to me, that's a pretty critical component to make sure that the wall can be designed properly with all the utilities out in the road.
Without getting into detail, Megan, have they submitted the design for the retaining wall?
I don't, not in the set of plans I have, no.
No, typically we don't, but that's something that I can look into.
I would think we'd want the design of the retaining wall. Any other members of the board have a question? I'm going to take one. Gentleman's got his hand up here. He looks, he looks important.
Well, yes. This easement is off Moose Club Park Road, right?
Yeah, and your name, sir?
Robert E. Bovier.
I know who it is.
If that easement comes off of Moose Club Park Road, it brings a great deal of concern to me, because this will, this is the easement that I've allowed, so I have problems with, first of all, they let me hook on to the sewer on Moose Club Park, but when the road goes in, I'm supposed to bring, or the easement goes through, I'm supposed to bring the sewer. Now, I don't want to have to pump the sewer uphill or create any concerns that way. So I'm very concerned about the design of this road going into the project.
Okay.
That's all I can say. I mean...
All right, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Since I've opened the doors, anybody else out there that wants to speak? Seeing none, I will not close the public hearing. We have, we still have one item after hearing Nicole's presentation as to accepting this project for review and is, is complete and ready for review. Not just planned for review and continue. Is complete. Is anybody willing to make that kind of motion? Understandably, we have questions, and we will request details on certain parts of this project, and we will consider in great detail the conditional use requests and any other waiver requests on the 6th of February. Members of the board? I'm looking for a motion to accept this plan as complete and ready for review and to, and to continue it for further consideration to February 6th, 2012.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Can you repeat that?
To find it complete and ready for review and...
I understand. Do we have a second?
Sure, second.
Mark has a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, bottom.
Understood that the completeness is only for acceptance and that the issues of waivers and conditional use remain outstanding.
Agreed.
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 Do you agree to that, Mark?
Sure.
Steve?
Just a clarification on the date. Is it the 6th or the 9th?
Someone said the 6th earlier.
Yeah, I believe that...
Somebody might be here, be here by themselves if they're not correct.
That is actually the 9th. It was 23 and sack 14 from that is...
I was trying to check my math.
I want to make sure we have it right, and we're all here...
Okay, so it's the 9th.
We're all here on the right tag.
Good job. Thank you.
9th is a Thursday. So the motion would be changed to read the 9th.
Please.
That is fine.
For February. Is that okay with you, Mark? Yes, so amended. Okay. Any other further comments on the motion? Seeing none, now call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. You have some work to do between now and then, Nicole.
And your last next time.
I didn't say that. You... I think we're gearing up first. Give Nicole a couple moments to get, gather herself. In the course of this evening, I may or may not take...
Yes. Yes. Don't check this and catch it as soon as you go to the...
Things in order, but I will give everybody an opportunity to speak. I will ask that you come up and be seated, because the, the mic in the audience is not working 100%. And I'd like to have everybody the opportunity to be heard. If there's anybody seated in the hallway wishes to come in, I'll have Brian go out and announce which petition we're talking about in the hallway, so that anybody that might still be out there will know that that particular one is being heard. Without taking him in any particular order, Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, since you're not going to take him in any particular order, I'll start with the first one on my list, which is the Hillsborough County land. And I made up a map here for those of you who are in the audience. I've got a few extra copies of all these maps here. If anyone wants to come up and grab one, they're welcome to. I made a few extra of the Mass Road project, because I'm guessing that most of you are here for that. But feel free to just walk up and grab one. The Hillsborough County land project is basically on the corner of Mass Road and Route 114. And the proposal basically is to rezone three parcels of land that are owned by the Hillsborough County. Let me get the map and lot numbers here, so I can make sure that that gets correct in the minutes. That is identified as tax map 6, lot 39, tax map 26, lot 20, and tax map 6, lot 35. Those are identified on the map above on the screen in red. I've got my handy-dandy pointer tonight, so this is the first one.
Brian, could you outline the road first, so people know where we're at?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Mass Road here. This is Route 114 where it tees into Mass Road, and then Lynchville Park Road, I think, is the one that comes off of there, right? The county owns these parcels, the long one on the north side of Mass Road, this big one that includes the county complex, the nursing home, which is there. The county complex is on the north side where all their county buildings are. And then there's this tiny little, small little triangle thing here, which is separated off from it, but owned by the county and adjacent to this big chunk of CIFZ. And in fact, this little piece just south of that triangle is actually owned by the county as well, and zoned CIFZ currently, so I think it makes sense to include that one in there. But basically, the proposal is to take this CIFZ zone right here and just basically extend it into their property, what they've, what they've...
Brian, for the audience, what is CIZF?
For the audience, CIFZ stands for Commercial Industrial Flex Zone. Currently, the property is all zoned agricultural, that's this green color here, white-green, it's hard to maybe tell the colors on here, but... And then this Commercial Industrial Flex Zone is a mixed-use zone that allows for Commercial Industrial and other types of development to, to occur on there. So the county has been looking at trying to plan their property. They've done a charrette for their property a few, a couple of years ago, and they expect further development later on this property. But at the time, right now, they're just looking at being able to utilize the current buildings that they have, which are underutilized right now. Some of them are vacant, some of them are half-used and other things. And if they want to be able to lease out their space to non-governmental uses, they would be limited by zoning to what they could do in there. So an agricultural zone doesn't necessarily allow them to lease it out to another business that wanted to use that empty space. So that's one of the reasons why they are looking for this rezone. In the future, the county may come back with a more detailed plan to kind of split this up and, and, you know, look at better, further developing their land and, you know, they may include another parcel. This parcel back here is owned by the county as well, and also this parcel, and also this parcel. So this is not all of their land, but they are, they're looking at doing the ones that are right along the, the main roadway and would most likely be further developed with possible commercial and industrial uses. With that, I'll turn it back to the county, the chair.
Members of the board, any immediate questions? Yes?
Brian, just for purposes of clarification, the lots as being requested are being requested to be changed, obviously, in their entirety, so the red lines that you have marked are the outline of that particular lot, correct?
Correct.
They're not proposing any lines through the middle of an approved lot?
No, they would not split a lot, is what you're asking.
Yes.
Right. The entire lot that they're asking for would be rezoned.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board? John?
Another question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That CIFZ and all this land out here, what is the infrastructure in place at this time? No, first question is how, when did that CIFZ zone become that from what it was? And has anything, has any new development happened on that since its inception? And then my, then I have a follow-up to that.
I would say yes. There has been some development, which is the Tetro Drive. We've seen a couple buildings there, and we have one that's approved. I currently see site work being done on, next to the station. Beyond that, I can't speak for any other developments. And I believe it was prior to my becoming a member of the board, so it's prior to 2005.
And part of that plan, as I recall, includes residential units at the east end of the Tetro Drive, so to speak, that has been before us in various gyrations, but has not been developed.
That is correct. So there's been some, and the second question about infrastructure.
Gas, water, electricity, and...
Some of those areas have water, either from the village or from Manchester. The sewer, our sewer interceptor runs down the rail trail, which is on the backside of their proposed change on the, to the north of Mass Road. I think there's limited gas service in the area, if not none. But hopefully, this might provide the impetus to get those utilities to extend into the areas in some fashion in the, in the not-too-distant future. I think that's, would be the plan for the future.
Okay, thank you.
I would ask the, the petitioner if they would like to come up and say a few words to both the board and the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the board and Mr. Rose, great presentation. I'm Gregory Wenger, the Hillsborough County Administrator, and I appear before the board today on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in their role as the stewards of the county land for this petition. Mr. Rose gave you a, a very good overview, actually what I would have said with respect to the petition. I'm here, I will answer any questions you have, and I will just try to briefly add that this is the continuance and another step in an ongoing and long-term process for the county to revitalize and reuse its land at the county complex. If we look at it, actually, back in 1988, a motion was made by the county delegation and appropriated funds to... and appropriated funds to reclaim those buildings and to move and consolidate all county operations into what is now the Bouchard Building, which is the large building on the north side of 114. Then we jumped to 19, 2002, when the next motion was made. And then it was actually 2003 when the funds were appropriated and construction started. So the county has revitalized the Bouchard Building. We relocated a majority of the county's administrative operations in 2004. In 2006, the delegation approved renovating the second floor. And in 2008, I believe it was, the Goffstown Court came into the building on the second floor of the Bouchard Building. We still have some vacant space there. We also have several other buildings on the property that we are looking at to try to do something with. As Mr. Rose explained to you, we are limited right now to agricultural use, basically, low-density residential uses. We would like to be able to expand that all a little bit to see and to open more opportunities for the county. We do not have any specific project right now. We don't have any funding for any specific project right now. So we are looking towards the future. And the bottom line, as with all governmental entities, we're looking to see if there are appropriate ways to generate revenue. So I can answer any specific questions you have, but that's basically what we're looking to do. This request is a recommendation out of the charrette, which was conducted in 2002, where the county brought in a number of professionals, several of whom were here this evening, as well as invited the community to get input with respect to what the county should look to and how we should plan for our use of the property into the future. So trying to look to plan towards the future as opposed to reacting to it. And this is the next step. One of the recommendations that came out of that was to work with the town and to come up with lands that could be used to go forward on the facility. So I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Members of the board, do you have any questions, or Mr. Wanger? Yes, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Wanger, for your, for your talk there. When, when you say that the county's looking to raise revenue or to do something with this and raise money, how are you looking to do that? Through rents, or taxes, or sale, or?
If, all of the boards that I have worked with, and I believe there's six different ones now, have all maintained the premise that the county is not interested in selling, but is interested in leasing. As with the zoning, the charrette also recommended that the county maintain ownership of the property. That's seen, I think, part of it as a win-win for both. It maintains a revenue source for the county if it were to lease its properties and would, if it is a non-governmental use, would create tax revenue for the town. So I think at this time, at this point, the expectation would be leasing. At the present time, we have a number of underutilized buildings. The main building that you see coming down Mass Road, the administrative building in the front, is a gutted building that's ready to try to put something in there. We have Building 25, which we refer to as Building 25, is the low former cow barn. Then there are a couple other buildings that have potential, you know, for use of other purposes. And our, you know, the county has maintained them, helped, made them secure, weather-secure, so that they are buildings that are available for use otherwise. At this point, we have been unsuccessful in finding any governmental use to move in. We also have some vacant, approximately half of the floor, half of the second floor of the Bouchard Building. The opposite side, the, the west side, is still vacant also. The court occupies the other half of that building.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to speak in reference to this petition?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Why don't you come up and be, let us know who you are.
Jason Sachs, Blackbrook Road. I would ask that the board vote to not recommend this amendment. And there are, there are some reasons why. It's unfortunate, I think, that this is one petition and not two. If this were two amendments, and one of them were the land shown north of 114, I would, I would vote for that. But you're talking about what looks like about 150 to 200 acres to be rezoned. And I think that as the petition is worded and as the zoning ordinance is currently, that is premature and opens up development that may not be what the town wants and is something that the board should really think about and work with the county to find the right amendment to cover this, this property. So there are two things that I wanted to bring the board's attention to. One of them is if you look at the dimensional regulations in the ordinance, which is page 23, Table 4.3, the property is presently zoned agricultural, and the number of dwelling units per buildable acre is 0.8. With the flex zone, that rises in a mixed-use project to, well, it's 15 dwelling units per acre, but then there's a footnote in the table that says for mixed-use projects, it's 12, 10 dwelling units per acre. So there's a potential for this to go from 0.8 dwelling units per acre to 10. And I know that the county probably wouldn't read, or put a, excuse me, put residential project forward. But this is a, this is a zoning change that would go with the land. And, you know, 20 years from now, maybe the property will change ownership, and someone will come forth with a mixed-use project, like the Rite Aid thing, where you have some commercial and some residential. I'm in favor of there being commercial development along this area in Goffstown, but I'm not in favor at all of having any residential development that's that dense. And I'm just afraid that by opening up 150, 200 acres to a zone that presently permits high-density residential development as part of mixed-use projects, that it's, it's too much of a step. So that's, that's one thing. The second thing, which, again, I absolutely support the use of the existing county land buildings for commercial development, like, like Mr. Wanger mentioned. I guess what I'm a little bit worried about is by changing from agricultural to flex zone, it opens the door for commercial development, which is probably appropriate, but it also closes the door for some agricultural uses. You know, there's a whole bunch in the principal uses table, from agricultural and horticultural operations to raising and keeping of livestock and poultry. And, you know, right down along 114, maybe that's not appropriate, but that's a lot of property in town. And if, if the county wanted to, to, you know, sell a portion of that back property to someone that wanted to have a horse farm or something, then that would be not permissible under Commercial Industrial zoning. So it just, it seems like too big of a step to me for now. But I would encourage you and the county to talk and try to craft an amendment next year that, that meets the intent of allowing Commercial Industrial development in the existing buildings and along the 114 corridor, but doesn't all of a sudden open the floodgates for High Density Residential Development. So, thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ivan Beliveau, East Unbutton Road, elected member of the Budget Committee. My comment, general comments would be just two words, jobs and taxes. It seems to me that this is an outstanding opportunity to bring some relief. We've had a three-year period around the country, and certainly in New Hampshire and in Goffstown, with a lack of jobs. So bringing in lots, allowing other commercial buildings, commercial properties to come in and create new jobs, to me, it seems like a no-brainer, absolute. And with a county being part of this, now there's three parties that are winning. Potentially employees, employers, and the county. So it seems like a win-win. And the other aspect of it is tax relief. Depending on how revenues fall out from the federal government, from the state, we are hearing now about downshifting. There's a budget process going on. We're probably looking at some potential of substantial increases in taxes in town based on uncertain revenues. That's one part of it, and increasing expenses. So anything that can be done to broaden the tax base and to bring relief. Now, there's no silver bullet that's going to solve all the problems, but all of it comes together and helps. And if we can create commercial space and allow businesses to come in in an intelligent, centralized way along a main corridor with utilities and so forth, it seems that along Mass Road and 114 is a unique use for commercial. And I think there's plenty of room in Goffstown for other agricultural uses, so I would urge the board to consider seriously the impact of property taxes and jobs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Brian?
Can I just point out one thing about the use of the principal uses table? The CIFZ zone allows dwelling units as part of a mixed-use project, but it's by conditional use permit. It's not an outright permission. So any project that wanted to do multifamily would have to come to the planning board and would have to get a conditional use permit and would have to meet the criteria of the conditional use permit in order to do that. So I just wanted to make that point.
Members of the board, have any questions of the petitioner?
Yeah, can I ask, what's the character of the land of the larger parcel on the south side of 114? Topography, wetlands, ledge? I mean, what's the potential for the kind of development that I think is anticipated under this petition?
I might defer to the, Mr. Wanger? Gregory Wanger, so he can, he probably knows the property a little better than I.
The, just so I understand, the, you're talking about the south property, the property where the, the, where the nursing home is on? It's actually a, just about everything's out there. As part of the, well, the county has done a wetland study, so we have the studies with respect to that. There are vernal ponds and things of that nature going through there. There is, on the west side of the property, there are some ledge and slope there. The charrette report, which is on the county's website, as well as the Cooperative Extensions' website, and the town does have a copy, and I believe when we were last here, we provided a copy of the summary, does have maps in there, which show you the, the types of land that you have in there. So it's, it's really a broad mixture with some significant slopes to it. Actually, slopes going both ways. Obviously, the nursing home is on a hill. That reaches a peak, and then it slopes back towards 114 to the south end of the property, as well as towards, towards the west. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
No, no, that's fine. And I don't ask for my benefit. I'm aware, I'm familiar with the property. I do it more for the people in the audience, so that they understand what we're talking about.
Not sure if I can summarize it specifically, but I would make.
It's more of like the entire town. There's some water, there's some hills, there's some ledge. You can get lost if you don't know where you're going, and that's pretty much, and lots of trees.
Yes, and it, obviously, it all slopes down to the river eventually, so it goes significantly. There is a significant slope, the rail-to-trail, there is a significant slope that goes down from there. I would, if anybody is looking for it on the county's website, and again, the Cooperative Extension, we do have the charrette summary report that's there, that does have the maps, that does show the various wetland issues there. The primary wetlands issues, obviously, are on the, the north side of the property. But there are some that have been identified on that side of the property.
Is that information available on the town's website, so folks can get access to it?
On the GIS?
Not on the town.
It, there are some indications of the topography. That location of the water tower. Some of the drainage patterns are obviously visible from the topography. And they do have some, show the adjacent open space developments to the south. There's off of, is it Addison Road? So there's some open spaces already dedicated on the south side of the property also.
Well, my concern is this is a very significant article. And the more information we can bring forward to the, to the folks and citizens, voters in Goffstown, I think would behoove us. Put that up on the town website, I think that'd be great.
I think there's some link to the county on the town website, I can't recall.
Let's make it a little more obvious.
Brian, I think we could probably get that to happen relatively easily. Barbara?
A question, further question. Mr. Wanger, Brian indicated in his presentation that you also own the sort of square parcel right smack in the center, sort of in the, of that map. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that the right, Brian, can you point it out?
That one?
That one, all right. And I, I guess my question is, why wasn't that included? That abuts the CIFX, CIFX, CIFZ as much certainly as anything else does. And I ask it somewhat in follow-up to Jason Sachs' comments and my question about sort of the splitting. I understand it's easier to do the whole lot. Nobody wants to survey and do other lines. But it, it does seem to me that the rezoning has reached into some territory that would be unlikely for certain types of development at this point for sake of having it, because it is part of the lot that abuts, and yet you've chosen not to do the other lot.
Well, if we look at the, the charrette, that lot that you're referring to that's not included was actually recommended to be a land bank, to put up there for future consideration in development. I believe the county at this point was, I would say, in part, limited by our boundaries in trying to keep this as simple, because we don't have the means right now to go out and subdivide and do things of that nature. So I think it was just a decision that this is the likely land that, or part, portions of this, if something is going to happen, happen in the near term, that's what it would be. And the charrette had suggested that that be put as land bank for future consideration anyway, so I think that was a consideration. I would also suggest that the fifth parcel that the county has, which is bounded by the rail-to-trail down to the river and then across the river, that's not being included. And again, the, the charrette put that as recreational-type uses, not necessarily for development, but more of those preserving the property for recreational and that type, which are things that we can do within the agricultural zone. So that's why that is left where it is. And there was an interest with respect to across the river. That would be a huge challenge, just to access it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Last opportunity for questions from the audience. Mr. Amerton, you have the floor for a couple of minutes.
Can I help you up?
Not yet.
He's one of my bosses, that's why I'd be careful. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am here representing the Goffstown Industrial and Commercial Corporation, which is a longtime entity who has always been pushing for more commercial in the town. We meet about every two or three months, and we have some seed money we can always help people with. But over the years that I've been on it, I think, Slickman, DeVanz, and I have been on it for 10 to 12 years. And people come to us and ask where Commercial-type land, I must say, commercial, but Commercial-type land is available. And when we show them and tell them, it's pretty slim, to be honest with you. Secondly, when we talk to people about building something here in Goffstown, they always say, well, it's a nice town, and this and that, and the other thing. By the way, I was chairman of this board for eight years, so I know a little bit. chairman of this board for eight years, so I know a little bit about people coming into town. And they'll say, "Well, it's a nice town," all this and that, "But we think we'll," later on, we find that they go to Bedford to hook it. Personally, I'm sick and tired of that, because it affects my taxes and affects your taxes. And when you see another eighteen million dollar school project, which I just left about an hour ago, coming in, you have to do something, whether you like it or not, to increase our tax base, which is very, very limited in that area. And lastly, I think you'll find that nobody is going to be running around here knocking on doors, on your doors or our doors, to go in there quickly. It's a slow process, not only the economy, but the big deal today, I don't have to tell you, are apartments, 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 nationally, apartments are a big deal, you know that, the one in, the one in, two in Panad Villa are coming in, wanting to come in, one in Goffstown, so that's the big thing. But rezoning this finally would give us a leg up to get our foot in the door, so we wouldn't have to send everything to Bedford and hook it and other places. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else wishing to speak? Jason?
Just a quick question, do you know what the acreages are for the three pieces of property? How would I find that out as a voter?
Mr. Winger must have it.
It's actually on the property tax card.
Mr. Winger, pass it.
Mr. Winger?
The county owns approximately four hundred and eighty-four acres there, so I think we're probably talking about, as Jason said, approximately two hundred and fifty acres of it. I don't know the exact for each lot.
Thank you.
If I could just add one thing, Mr. Chair, I will leave a copy of the summary Charette report here, but also just with respect to the use of the county's land and the development of the county's land, briefly, just to let you know, in order for anything to happen on the county land, the Board of Commissioners has to come forward with a proposal. That proposal then has to go through review and be ratified by the County Executive Committee. It then has to go and has to be ratified by the full county delegation, by a majority vote. This proposal will add the additional level, layer of any proposal then having to come before this board for any approvals with respect to zoning. At the present time, majority of what we could do is governmental use, this board only has input to that, but has no control over that. So before anything is done on this property, there is significant approval process and review process that has to be done, and I didn't mention that in between there, the executive committee has a building committee for the county, which also has a say in this. So as somebody suggested earlier, nothing's going to happen quickly, and there is a long review process. Our hope is, by changing the zoning ordinance, we are at least there, and we'll open the door and have people come in and have gotten over having to do that and waiting another year to do, to get that amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, what's your pleasure?
Are you closing the public hearing?
You want to wait until the end to vote on all the petitions, or you want to take them one at a time? Be done with it. The information is in front of you, and it's fresh in your minds?
Are you closing the public hearing?
The public hearing is still open until such time as, only on this subject, we could close it on this subject, but not on the rest of it. We opened a public hearing when we started for the option of hearing the petitions.
Okay, well, just a point of order, are we having a separate public hearing for each petition, or are we having a public hearing to go through the petitions and then vote?
I think we're having one public hearing, so we need to vote at the end.
Okay, we'll vote at the end then. Okay? That's fine. Brian, you have the floor, number two.
The second petition article was a petition from property owners in the Parker Station Historic District area. They basically are looking to remove a small portion of land, switch to that map here. They want to remove a small portion of land from the historic district and redefine the historic district boundary to that lesser size area. And basically, the area that they're talking about is along North Mast Road, this is North Mast along the bottom of the screen here. Parker Station Road kind of pulls up off of there, and Gorham Pond Road tees up off of that. Currently, the historic district includes the entire area enclosed by the red boundary here, and the proposed area to be removed from the district is this green box right here. Basically, it's three hundred and six feet wide, a parallel line to this line, so that line would be parallel to this line, and then three hundred and fifty feet back from the center line of North Mast Road is where this line would end back here, the current edge of the zoning of the overlay district right now. So they would be looking at removing that portion of the district from this lot, it's not even currently all shown on the property, but it's one big lot right here, and it starts and it goes, you know, around like that, and off up under the top over here. But this is just a small portion of that one lot, and they're going to, they're talking about removing that from the district. Right now, this house that's on the lot was something that the Historic District Commission had been interested in keeping in the historic district, and so they, you know, they made comments and wanted that to be a part of the district still. And in coming to the planning board, the applicant had asked about this portion of that lot, but had gotten comment from the planning board that this portion should remain so that the district could remain contiguous on this side of Gorham Pond Road. So that's what they came back with, and that's what they proposed in their petition, and that's basically it. And I'll turn the time back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Is the petitioner here to do a presentation? Please come forward, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I appreciate the time. My name is Robert Naser, I'm here with my dad, Bob Naser, and we're the petitioners for this article. Just to give, I think Brian did a nice introduction, appreciate that, thank you. But I think to put this in a little bit of a historical context, we, two years ago, we had appealed a ZBA decision in which we were denied the right to demolish the house on the property. We appealed that decision, and it was, right now, it's currently pending in the Superior Court. In that time, since it's been in court, we've talked with a number of the town boards about coming to an agreement to settle this out of court. We think that it would be expeditious to do that, save us time, and it would save the town an unknown amount in legal fees going forward. We believe that we have the right to do it, and we're ready to proceed in court if we have to. We think that the state property laws, constitution, and the case precedent is there for us to be able to do it, but regardless, I think it's in everybody's best interest to look towards a settlement. This amendment of the overlay district is really one piece of multi-faceted settlement agreement that we are trying to bring to conclusion here. Last time, we were, this article has been reviewed by the town's attorney, it's been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Administrator, and as Brian mentioned, we had presented an article, this article, or this concept to this board several months back, and we took into consideration the recommendations that this board has made. In addition, the, this article has been supported by the Goffstown Industrial Corp., Tony March is the chairman, as well as at least one member of the Historic District Commission. And given the circumstances and the importance of this article in settling this agreement, we're asking that the board give this a full consideration and support this zoning change in the 2012 town meeting ballot. Thank you.
Members of the board, have any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, I'll open it to the public. Any member from the public wishing to speak in reference to this petition? Okay, seeing none. Members of the board, have any addressable comments or questions? I mean, we've looked at this numerous times in the past, but call us, you've-
I'm just curious, how would the town benefit from this change in zoning?
You know, I guess that's a question for the town, but I think that-
Well, that's a question to you.
Well, it's one of the agreements of the settlement. Why would we, I think that we would like to see the whole area changed, but that's, you know, that's our opinion, that's our position. The benefit to the town primarily is that the house would be saved, that's part of the agreement going forward. So I think there is a meaningful benefit from the town's perspective and the Historic District Commission's perspective too, to agreeing to this.
I think that's the one primary spot, is that the house does stay. But Barbara, you had a question? You look like you had a question.
Has the Historic District Commission taken a position on this? And I'm looking at Phil, because-
On this particular, I mean, on this particular amendment?
Well, the issue, yeah.
Well-
Sure they haven't met on the zoning ordinance, but they discussed the request?
It's been discussed.
And have they taken a position on it, or?
I don't think, I don't think that, I mean, where, some of, some of the points that were made by Mr. Naser might be debatable as any type of a thing like this.
But they haven't taken any formal position on it?
No.
Okay.
Is there any member of the Historic Commission here, other than Phil? Seeing none. Brian, you had any thoughts, or we, members of the board, have we heard enough from the petitioner to be able to deliberate on this later on this evening?
That's it for me?
Yes.
That was it for me, I'm just-
Then I will close this particular portion of the hearing for this evening, on this particular petition only, and we'll adjudicate on it later on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Brian, you have the floor again. Or does anybody want a 8:30 break?
No.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item on the list of amendments is a proposed rezone of property with the address of 4 Pershing Street. That is located on Mast Road, basically, right at the edge of the RSBO2 zone. If you look right here, this light green portion is the RSBO2 zone, this portion is commercial. You can see these large parcels here, this is Hannaford's, this is Abingdon Square, right in here, this is where the Rite Aid is. So it's definitely in an area that is, you know, full of commercial development. This happens to be right on the edge, as I stated, of the commercial zone anyway, and so it would just be an extension of that commercial zone, basically. The current use of the property is a chiropractic office, so is already a commercial use or office use, and I would say fits very well with the commercial district regulations and requirements. So it's my recommendation that this petition article be approved. I don't believe it would have any significant impact, since the use has already been developed there and it's already in operation, it's basically just changing the zoning. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, have any initial comments? Is the petitioner, yes, Phil?
I have a, I guess it's a technical question, and perhaps Brian might be able to address it, I'm not sure. But this petition, other members have a copy of it, the article, the petitioned article is only present on the front page, and the signatures are on the bottom of it, and the following is just attached pages with signatures. And I guess I question the format, if it meets a legal petition, and if the signatures that are on the front meet the 25 minimum.
I believe that the, when the petition was submitted, that all the signatures were checked against the-
Well, those are checked by the supervisor of the checklist, and their authority is to only check that they are residences, but they don't have statutory authority to determine whether the petition is legal, but I guess that's my question.
So Phil, is your question whether or not the signature's on the following pages?
No, if the format, if the format as presented-
Yeah.
-is legal, and the fact that these other signatures-
Has no heading on it, so you don't know what they signed it.
Exactly.
That's my point.
Exactly.
I understand your question. I don't know the answer.
I'm just bringing it up in a public hearing.
Okay. Steve?
No, I'm scratching my head.
I don't know the answer.
I can bring that question up to our town attorney, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Neither am I. But let's assume they all came in, being positive, they came in attached to the petition the way it's presented this evening, for the point of discussion and presentation this evening. And we'll leave it to somebody wiser than me to figure out what's correct or incorrect about it. Phil, you have the floor, sir, please introduce yourself.
Thanks, my name's Bill Galanis, and I own Backtalk Chiropractic. I purchased that property back in 1996, and from the history, I think it was from 1988 to 1994, it was zoned commercial, and back in 1995, for some reason, it was rezoned to RSBOD. And when I, I had to go through some variances and a few planning meetings such as this, Chairman, to, you know, turn it into my office. And after several months, I was approved for my office downstairs and two offices to be used upstairs. Along the way, I've just used it as my office, and I used the upstairs in some type of rent agreement, but over the years, I thought I was just going to change to commercial without me even coming in, fifteen, sixteen years later. In the meantime, I refinanced, and at first, when I bought the property, it was residential, you know, I had a residential rate, so when I go to refinance, you're not residential at all, it's RSBOD, but you're commercial. The insurance that I purchase on it is commercial, but there's some restrictions, say, in the, in fact, I want to rent the upstairs to somebody, to an attorney that's looking at the space, but I only have an eight-square-foot sign permit, being residential, small business, when across the street, I'm from Hannaford's, as Brian said- when across the street, I'm from Hannaford's, as Brian said, the Bergeron's photo, the new gun shop, and my abutting neighbor's commercial. So, I'm not saying I have a hardship 100%, but I'm having restrictions to where I can't, you know, use my building the way it was approved for three businesses, to where, you know, I'm approved for 11 parking spots in the front and two in the back, which I have enough parking. I'm not looking to expand the building, to change the building, to do anything, just to be zoned commercial. So, I'm not, I'm just limited to certain things, and, you know, other than selling it to other small offices or whatnot, or a hairdresser, according to the ordinances, I'm pretty restricted in that nature also. But that's pretty much it.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, is any member of the public wishing to speak in reference this petition to change the zoning on this site to commercial? Seeing none. Back to the members of the board, any further questions of this petitioner? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We will make the decision in terms of the vote of the board, as you well know, it will still appear on the ballot, no matter what the circumstance of the vote of this board.
Thanks.
We thank you for your time and consideration.
In pertaining to the signatures, we had come in and just asked if everything was all right a day ahead of time, so if there was anything else pertinent-
I'm assuming that it's all okay.
Okay, alright, thanks. I appreciate it.
Because he's having a heart attack right now.
I know, I know.
I didn't mean to do that, I just wanna, you know, the subject is-
It's critical, I understand.
Just for clarification, I don't want anybody to think that I said that to try to throw a wrench into it. It's just that, it's a subject that does come up, and what we don't want is for this to come up at the last moment, and then, all of a sudden, nobody has the answer.
My underst, Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
My understanding is that, that Brian scrutinizes these petitions as they come in, as they're submitted, and they are actual, and, and I know of one that was forwarded off to the town attorney. So, I'm assuming that either just one was, or all of them are, as a normal practice. And, and I think that would have been caught at that time if, for some reason, it wasn't, it wasn't legitimate.
Correct. Thank you. Brian, you have the floor for number four.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our big request, I think, tonight, and the reason probably why most of the people are here. This is the Mass Road Properties, is what I'm calling it, rezone request. It's a petition that, the properties outlined in red on this map would be rezoned to commercial from, there's two zones involved that they are currently zoned right now. That's RSBO2, which is most of the lots, and then there's a small portion that's zoned residential too. And I've sort of done an outline of what is zoned what, and what is included on the lot, and what's not, and then also some of the properties that I found to be actually split zone properties in, in doing some research.
All right, Brian, are you going to get in depth in this right now?
Uh, I was going to explain basically what I had on it, and then, and then let you kind of take it after that, if you want.
Okay. John, I, I think you might have to recuse yourself at this point in the presentation, since you're the petitioner.
Any owned property that's included in it?
You can present as a, as a petitioner, but I don't think you can sit in adjudication on the decision.
Based on what, Mr. Chair?
That's, I'm just asking. If you've got another different opinion, I'd like to hear it right now. I think, in fairness, in fairness, we have a quorum of the board, we have two alternates that can vote in, as you step down and would vote on this, since you're the petitioner, with no prejudice on the merit of the petition. But in fairness to the community, I think, as a presenter of the, of the petition, I'm assuming you're presenting the petition, but you should step down from the board to do that.
I wasn't planning on it, no, but I, I certainly could, but I wasn't planning on it. I had consulted, I had consulted an attorney on this, actually, and just asked that question, and, and with full disclosure as to my participation and what I have with this. I couldn't find anything in the town regulations that would limit my participation on the board tonight. But I have no problem stepping down, and I would be glad to present this if so requested by the chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I actually also inquired of our town attorney regarding that, regarding this question. And he gave me indication that it was okay for a member of the planning board to make a petition and still act as a planning board member, so.
Did you disclose to the attorney that, that John owns a property that's involved in the change, and that he previously represented to this board, that he prepared the petition and was the petitioner?
That part of it, I'm leaving to John, but a, just a person who is a petitioner, who may be a planning board member as well, does not necessarily have to recuse themselves for that reason, is what I'm, is what I'm saying.
For the petitioning piece of it?
Right. Because there, and, and actually, I mean, there were, there were a couple of signatures from our board on different petitions. So, you know, I, I don't know that that necessarily means that a person needs to recuse themselves for being on a, you know, a signatory on a, on a petition. But for the reason of owning the, owning property within that, that might be-
The issue becomes full disclosure, I, I think. Again, if the chair wishes me to step down, I will. But the issue is full disclosure, and I have every intention of fully disclosing my participation in this. And I have no, but I do have no problem.
I have to take the word of our planning director, that he's consulted with the town attorney in reference this, and I will take the town attorney's word that John can sit as directed by town attorney. Phil?
I just, I just have a question, and I guess I'm, I'm, just to make it clear in my mind, I'm not sure. The petition that we're looking at now, the petitioner owns property that they're requesting to be rezoned?
It's, it is included in the parcels, yes. My understanding is, yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, the town attorney did not comment on that portion of the information. I didn't give him that question to answer. So, he answered the question of whether or not a petitioner could be on the planning board and act as a planning board member. But the point of having, you know, property that they own in the, in the area to be rezoned may be a different question, I'm not sure.
I, I would just submit that they are two very different questions. I mean, if you're, if you're a petitioner for a petitioned article, you have, you're out there getting signatures, and then it becomes, you know, it becomes a petitioned article, and you're not the only person supporting it. But the fact that you have a pecuniary interest in the result, I think, would be, certainly could, could be a problem, and I, I have some concerns about that.
Okay. There's nothing in our, our planning RSA guideline book to reference that subject, Steve?
I am looking. But, you know, the, the general standard for recusal certainly includes a pecuniary interest, or the appearance of bias.
Okay. Can the chair rule on that? Is there a presentation?
I'm sorry?
Can the chair rule on that in the presentation? We don't, we don't operate under any rules of-
We, Collins rules.
We, we could take a vote, that would be another way that it's sometimes done, is the board can vote. I, I, I think that, you know, if you're a board member and you're unsure whether or not you should step down, that one prudent way to proceed would be to-
Recuse yourself.
Either recuse or ask-
The problem that you can run into by not recusing yourself would be future challenge of the vote and of the action.
Okay. John?
Mr. Chair, just one other part of this, in the legislature, many of us are, have specific interests all the time, and, and again, that full disclosure that we all must do when something comes up where we are involved, and there's even a higher level of full disclosure if it particularly involves us singularly, and sometimes an industry or a bill or something may include a particular person, or one or two, where they are really involved in this. This particular piece, my property is a, is a, not, not small or large, but it's one of very many of these. So, even though my property is located within these boundaries, it is not specifically for me alone to have these, and this is the advice that I was given, that my property, that I am not the only one that's going to be, that would potentially benefit or lose from this. I am just one, and I just happen to be in this area, along with several other of my neighbors who, who are, who asked for this petition, and was not prepared or didn't understand exactly how the process worked, and I did, so that's why I took the lead on this. But this does not directly affect only me, it, it affects-
Like 39 properties, or something like that?
Like 39 properties, and I'm just one of 39, yes.
Steve?
Just into the record, because I found the statute, and I'm not trying to say that, John, I think you have to recuse yourself, I'm just getting the information out there so we could decide whether or not-
I, I agree, I-
Brian's right, the bigger concern is, you know, if, if this goes on the ballot, and yea or nay, if something happens down the road, it could create an issue. But RSA 67314 deals with the disqualification of a member, and Roman numeral one says, "No member of a zoning board of adjustment, building code, board of appeals, planning board, heritage commission, historic district commission, agricultural commission, or housing commission shall participate in deciding, or shall sit upon the hearing of any question which the board is to decide in a judicial capacity, if that member has a direct personal or pecuniary interest in the outcome, which differs from the interest of other citizens, or if that member would be disqualified for any cause to act as a juror upon the trial upon the same matter in any action at law. Reasons for disqualification do not include exemption from service as a juror, or knowledge of the facts involved gained in the performance of the member's official duties." And then Roman numeral two is what I was referring to before, it says, "When uncertainty arises as to the application of paragraph one to a board member in particular circumstances, the board shall, upon the request of that member or another member of the board, vote on the question of whether that member should be disqualified. Any such request and vote shall be made prior to or at the commencement of any required public hearing. Such a vote shall be, shall be advisory and non-binding, and may not be requested by persons other than board members, except as provided by local ordinance or by a procedural rule adopted under RSA 6761."
Okay.
I, I think that provides us with some guidance on how to deal with this.
And what is, what is the book that you're-
It's the law.
State arms.
Understand that, but like-
Provides statute annotated.
Say what the book is. Thank you.
Taking it from the Planning and Land Use Regulation, it's RSA 67314.
Okay. Members of the board? Is it a question?
I'll just say, I don't think it's a question. I think you clearly have a pecuniary interest in this by virtue of the ownership of the property, and I think that clearly meets the statute. I know on this board that abutters have been requested to step down when there are proposals before them, and there's absolutely no direct interest in, in, from a pecuniary standpoint. But there have been more than one occasion when board members have stepped down because of the fact they have budded developments. And I know Colas recently stepped down just by virtue of the fact that he rented, didn't even own directly, but rented property from an application before the board. And I think it would be a shame to have this board address this particular zoning ordinance with what I see as having a member in the discussion that clearly has a personal, and I, you know, pecuniary, personal interest in it. I think it's sort of uncomfortable to have a petitioner, and you've got a legal counsel. I have an issue with the petitioner, because I think somebody sitting here to present something to the board that decides it is a very different position than sitting here in a judicial capacity making a decision. I don't even, that's a disagreement of opinion. But I don't think there's any question in regards to the fact that the ownership of a lot, changing from RSBO2 to, and R2 to commercial, where arguably, based on previous public comment, the entire point of it is for pecuniary gain, not only for the property owner, but for the town, I think it clearly qualifies under the statute. So, I mean, that's my read on it.
Okay. Any other members of the board wish to express their opinion or make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I think I'm going to step down, and I'm going to present the petition to the board.
Probably makes more sense for you to present it, since people ask you to do it, and you know the process.
Very.
Thank you.
It's a slow process, but thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
It's a slow process.
I think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you. I agree, and I think it, I think it is too.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to finish kind of explaining what I've-
Now you can start, yes.
Or start, yes. I guess I'll start by saying that I think there are a lot of concerns that I have with this petition and this rezone. The language of the petition, I'll start off, to me, was flawed. It had a list of properties that were given as the properties to be rezoned. The language of it basically alluded to the fact that those, all those properties listed were zoned RSBO2, not, you know, RSBO2 and residential. There was then language afterwards that said plus six additional lots, but it didn't split out those lots, it didn't name those lots. And I think that's somewhat misleading and could be interpreted in different ways.
Which lots are those, Brian?
The, the six lots that are zoned residential are lot map-
Can you highlight them?
Yeah. They're, they're on the map here, they're these, these yellow lots right here.
Okay, thank you.
The yellow?
The yellow lots.
Like the code says.
There is a legend, R2 zoned properties. So, those, those six lots are fully zoned R2. Now, I also did find in doing research and, and trying to create this map, and, and double checking each one of the lots in the list, I found several lots that had split zones, where the, the zoning line crosses the, the lot in midway. So, these two lots actually, I mean, the lot, the, the line on the GIS is very close to this edge, so there's just a very small sliver, and I'm not sure if that's a GIS error or not, but- or not, but I, I, I highlighted it just anyway, just because that was there. But then this, this lot here has a, has a line going right here where that is residential two on the backside and RSBO two on this side here. So that's, that's a split lot, and that was not clearly identified in the petition. Same thing with this lot here, this line right, splitting the, the lot right there. This is actually one big lot that kind of is an L-shaped lot, and the line splitting the RSBO two from the residential zone is right there. And this petition includes the entire lot, but it's, it's not clearly stated that the, that that was a split zoned lot previously. And then one more down here on the bottom, this is a, is a lot that's included in the petition, but a, a portion of that lot is zoned residential two, and the other portion is zoned commerci-, RSBO two. Now the other thing that's, that I found on this as I went through it is this blue color represents leftover RSBO two islands, that if this petition were to be approved by the voters, we would end up with some lots that were zoned RSBO two that would just kind of be by themselves, left over, they were not included in, in the petition. This is one lot that I found that just wasn't included, and I'm not sure if they were left out by mistake or, or on purpose, but we would end up with several, and, and there's a little, a little sliver lot right there that's on this lot, that's, the zoning line, again, doesn't match up perfectly to the lot line. And the same thing with down in this corner, there's a couple of overlapping where the zoning line doesn't meet the lot lines, there's one right there, and there's one right there. So those are, those are some concerns that I have as far as what we would be left with at, at the end if this actually did go through, the way it's been petitioned, I think those would be, those, those lots being left over like that would just be kind of scattered and, and not well planned out. It would be, to me, kind of like spot zoning on several small little pieces all by themselves.
Can I comment on that, Brian?
Yes.
The reason on Preston Street that they don't line up is because that's, that zone was established before Preston Street was subdivided and the houses were built there. And so that lines were never changed during the fact that that subdivision was approved. That, that commercial line has existed for a long time. And, and secondly, I wouldn't rely on the GIS to my way of working in this town on its accuracy in terms of property lines, in terms of zone. And for instance, up here at the north end...
Right here.
Any of those discrepancies have all been noted because we've had an approval on that site beforehand.
And, and if those had been the only ones, I may not have even brought that issue up, but I, I did because there were other lots involved as well, and so I, I, I said to myself, okay, well, it may not make a difference to add these in, but I'll point out that there is a discrepancy.
And I think all of those discrepancies have been subject to board action in the last five or six years.
Which hasn't cleared up a thing.
But never, never gets caught up in, in, in the corrective action. So I have no problem with the fact that, just because one map doesn't agree with the other, that we're talking about lots as identified by tax map. And the zoning line is probably the one that's best represented. As a matter of fact, the one where the antique shop is, that lot in the back was subdivided off at a later time, or that line was put in there on some action after that shop was granted.
Which lot is that, the big green one? The one to the left?
This, this lot to the left here.
Yeah.
Divided off if they had to build a house on it later time, I believe, after the site plan was approved for that antique shop. So I, I, there's been action along the road here that certainly hasn't been caught up correctly with the GIS. But you have the floor again, Brian.
Okay, thank you. I'll just point out of the, my other concerns that I had written in my report. This rezone will create many non-conforming lots in the newly created commercial district, many of which will be required to go for special exceptions and variances through the zoning board in order to do any reuse of their lot. Setbacks become an issue. When abutting a residential district, setbacks become fifty feet for properties in the commercial district. So any, any properties rezoned to commercial would end up with a fifty-foot setback where abutting a commercial district. The concept of a transition zone, as the RSBO two zone has always kind of been portrayed, would end up basically going away because we would end up with basically a, 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 a line of agricultural, and then it goes straight from the R two to the commercial instead of the R two to the RSBO two to the commercial. And so that, that transition zone would, would disappear with this. Number four, many of the lots that stretch along Mass Road are developed with single-family homes, not businesses. And so is it really appropriate to rezone many of these homes, residential properties, to a commercial zone? Yes, it is on a, on Mass Road which leads into Pinnardville where there is more of a commercial district, but in that area, the, the, the majority of the structures are residential. This converts six lots on a side street of Mass Road from residential two to commercial. That's those yellow lots that I, that I mentioned earlier, that's these lots. Those are definitely all in a residential area, and I, I don't believe should be zoned commercial when, when that area's been fully developed as residential. And lastly, single-family homes are not allowed in the commercial district. Every single-family home in that district would become a grandfathered use. And if somebody's house were to be torn down because it was old and needed to be torn down, they would have to then conform to the commercial, to the commercial district regulations, and if they wanted to build a house on it, they would end up having to get a variance. So that's just, I'm just trying to bring up some of the concerns that I have with doing this. I think, you know, if the planning board wants to, you know, look at this in further detail and bring it back as a, as, as a planning board recommended item in the future with some of these considerations being taken into account, you know, that might be something. But with, with the amount of problematic things that I found with this at this time, I don't recommend that this petition be recommended for, for voting.
Members of the board, if you have any questions? Members of the board, call us.
So all the residential properties would become grandfathered non-conforming lots, correct?
Yes.
And in order to make changes to their property, they'd have to go through what process?
It basically, it depends on what they want to do, but I mean, typical development of a non-conforming lot always requires a special exception. Now, you know, that would be, develop, development means to me, I'm looking at a, at an empty lot. So if somebody takes down a building that's on their lot and they're left with an empty lot, and then they want to rebuild something on there, they would have to build it either to the commercial standards or get, get the special exception to be able to build that non-conforming.
And if they wanted to expand their home, add a garage, expand their home, what process would they have to go through?
It, it would depend on, you know, whether or not setback requirements could still be met, it, it, there's a, there's a few things that, so I can't give a straight answer on, on one particular property or another, but I would have to look at each individually. But they would be, they would be subject to the new commercial setback rules, and...
But would it be fair to say it would be a more rigorous process than it is currently?
Anytime you end up with a, a use that's in a, in a zone that's where it's a non-conforming kind of thing, you, it ends up being more problematic. If you're in a zone where you're, you know, you're, you're the use that is supposed to be in that zone, then that, that's typically less problematic and you end up with less problems.
Thank you.
Any other board members? I have just a ques- couple of questions for Brian. Does that mean if I, if I own a house here and I can sell it for a commercial use, I could move a business in as long as I don't alter the footprint of the existing building? Yes, I can.
Yes.
That means if you take a house just like the daycare...
You're answering for him?
I've been thinking about why, why you would allow this, and that would be that you'd have to stay within the confines, like we have approved a half dozen projects on this road for commercial use within the confines of an existing building. It's just basically the same situation. It becomes into play, the setbacks and all that, when you tear it down. And then if someone's going to tear something down, I, I think if you take a look at Mass Road, ninety percent of any development on Mass Road has been within the confines of an existing building. So I don't see the dimensional problem as a planner and a member of this board. So that's my speech for the moment. Anybody else want to add anything to that before I open it to the petitioner? Would like to present the petition?
I'll have a question.
Phil was raising his hand too.
No, Phil?
Yeah, just for the record, Mr. Jim, and I had the same question with this one as I did with the other. This one has the lots and the information that John, John, Brian referred to, has six, four signatures at the bottom. The only difference I see between this and the other one, that these pages are, the pages are numbered, one of seven, two of seven, but there's no reference on the following pages that has that on it, so I have the same concern.
Okay. Is the petition present, please? You have the floor.
Thank you, I'm going to grab my coffee first. Thank you, board, my name is John Heikel, four eighty-three Mass Road. This petition came about through some requests from neighbors who had asked and had always thought that, that this was, should be commercial property. It's very difficult getting in and out of driveways sometimes, it's a very busy road, a lot of the properties are right on the street. Being in the middle between the commercial zone of Pinnardville and the proposed five hundred acres of commercial industrial flex zone from the county, it's a natural kind of progression that's going to end up happening now or in the future. The homes that are on that property don't change at all. Nothing changes if the zone changes to commercial property tax-wise. Everything's going to stay the same as long as the use remains the same as a residence. There's nothing that says that any of the, any of the residents that live in this zone have to sell their property. They can live in it forever and continue to have it just like it is right now, nothing changes for them. If the house did get torn down or burnt down, the issue does come as to what can they do with that property at that time? And the possibility of a variance will be necessary to rebuild that property. This gives the property owners in this zone an additional option to do something with their property. Because if any of you have tried to sell your house in the past few years, or are thinking of selling your house in the next ten years, you may want to hunker down because you may be living there for quite a while. But this gives an additional option for the people that live there to say, well, I can't sell it for my house because nobody wants to, nobody can buy it, nobody has any money, the bank's not loaning anything, and I really want to sell this property, so this is just an additional option and, and some, and sort of a windfall for the people that live in this zone. It's not unreasonable to request this zoning change. Also, if you've been keeping up with Obamacare, you may have read that a three percent, three point eight percent sales tax is in that for properties that are going to be sold after two thousand and thirteen. So if you have a two-hundred thousand dollar house, you may be paying another seven or eight thousand dollars in the sales tax that's part of that bill if our next president doesn't get rid of it. So consider that, not to mention your closing costs and all the other costs and fees and things that have to do with selling your house, if you can even do that. This is a, this is a good request, it's a reasonable request, I don't have my, I don't have my laser pointer, but, oh, thank you. The red one, thank you. This lot, I'm just going to go down this, go down the strip here a little bit. This, and I know you're thinking, and I'd also like to mention that from the beginning to the end of this petition process, I came in and ran this by our town planner three times, and each staff asked, how does this look? How does this look? I was sent samples of what a petition should look like. How does this look? Looks good, looks good, looks good, go get the signatures, bring it back in, and that's the, that's the, that's how it's done. And then as soon as I turned it in, we found out there was all kinds of flaws. I was acting on advice from the town planner in crafting this petition, so anything that is incorrect in it, I'd place the blame on the planner. Sorry for the reality, but that's exactly what happened. But getting back on to the sys, the subject of why this is a good idea. You've got, you've got the one fourteen intersection here, you've got the Century Twenty-One that we've already approved for, that the planning board has already approved for sixteen residential condos and an office building on that property. You've got, I don't know how big this parcel is, but it's a very, it's a substantial, it's a large piece of land, it's twelve... Nine point eight acres, thank you. This antique store that you've got, and this piece over here that you were questioning the line on, on the ma, on the, on the zoning map that's presently on the town website, listed as lot twenty dash nineteen, the entire piece, it doesn't show that line running through it. So the era is in the map, it's not in the drawing of it because I just copied what is on the town website presently as of a month ago. Okay? We've got, as you move down this strip here, you've got, well, the antique store, you've got... We've got a gift shop, we've got a Montessori school, daycare, we've got another daycare, we have what used to be an old house that I guess that was part of this estate where the condominiums are, it's the brick building, there is nobody living in that building, it's fully commercialized, but it's in an RSBOD district that somehow was approved and to, to, to exist. And the owner of this property is very supportive. There are several neighbors throughout this area that I've spoken with who are very supportive of this. There are several neighbors throughout this area that I've spoken with who are very supportive of this idea. And I know as it's being presented as one lot and nonconforming and small, but look at a bigger picture. Coming down 114, this entire parcel over here, you've got frontage on 114, you've got frontage on Mass Road. This right here, if these owners, and again, they never have to do anything with this, they can keep it and live there forever. Or they could all get together and say, "You know what? This is a pretty nice piece of property and if anybody has the foresight in years to come," and they say, "Why don't we all get together and, and for this, I'm willing to move." And we could put this on the market, that's just a, that's just a thought, but that gives them the potential to do a lot more than they're gonna be able to do with their home in the next few years to come. Across the street, same situation, you've got another large corner here, you've got a lot of large parcels over here prime for development, prime, prime for some sort of a commercial use that would, um, enhance the tax base of the town of Goffstown. It would create jobs, it would, uh, you've already got, and, and the main thing about this corridor right here that you don't have on the county property and you don't have on the 114 piece that we've been talking about for years, or the one on the back, Goffstown Back Road with the antennas, you have no infrastructure. You have no water, sewer, gas, or elec- well, you've got electricity. But when, when we talk about the one, especially on the 114 that I've been talking about for a long time with Jim McClellan's property, we're talking about we need an intersection, we need access, we need two or three million dollars for all this stuff to get put in there before anybody even moves forward on it. The one on the Goffstown Back Road, um, you've got a weight restriction from Manchester coming in there after nine thirty, no trucks. Not gonna be a very good industrial park at that, since it's zone industrial. These things that we have around here, that TIF district, you keep, you know, you talked about, that is to the, um, I, I think it's the north of the county land that we're talking about, that, that, it's on the side of a hill, it's very difficult, you've got rail trail problems, you've got access, you've got, who's gonna, who's gonna build this road, who's gonna do all this stuff, and the answer is probably nobody for a long time because they haven't for a long time yet. This piece right here has all of the infrastructure, not to mention connects a commercial zone here, Manchester just a mile down the road into another very large commercial industrial zone. This is prime real estate for changing. And for these other little things that are left over here, that's, I don't know, an amendment or for, or for next year, we can add them on. But nothing even has, nothing, I don't foresee anything happening here immediately. There are no developers knocking on anybody's door to come down here and just start ripping the place apart. The intention of this whole idea was to give the owners of these properties the peace that they can live there exactly like they do now, but give them another option for the future if they ever decide that they want to sell and have another, another choice in trying to market their properties. And with that, I think-
Members of the board, got any questions?
Cover what I need to.
Barbara.
John, how did you decide on the boundary that you decided to, to make from, and I'll just say east to west? And how did you decide what lots to include?
I copied the, I copied the, as best as I could, read the zoning map on the town website. I, I copied the, this is from the town website.
Right, okay.
And that's how I-
Okay, but I guess my question is, what was, how did you determine which lots you included in that? I understand where you got the information from, but how did you decide what lots to draw the red line around, so to speak? How did you make that decision?
The ones that were in the RSBOD, that, the ones that were zoned RSBOD right now-
Okay, so that's what you, you-
That's how I did that, I didn't, I, the only residential change that I made was in that corner of 114, which the folks that live on that corner, if they, I mean, if they can live there forever, but if they realize the potential of what they're sitting on, I would, for not ever having to do something, but having that in, um, as a potential in their, in their repertoire, I would, uh, I would assume that they would consider that.
Barbara, to answer your question, I think most of these lots have frontage on Mass Road.
Well, that, one would presume that that was the one-
And that was the other reason, yes.
But I'm not sure that was used, I was trying to clarify.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start with the front row here, left to right, so we're not gonna fight over who gets to speak. I'm gonna come back, but I'll start with this gentleman over here in just a couple of minutes, Phil.
Thank you. Do we know in these properties, if this was to, in the proposed change, how many si- homes or residences are currently used as residences? Of these properties?
I counted there were fifty-one properties to be rezoned.
Okay.
So I don't know how many of those are residences versus businesses, but-
Again, and the reason for my question, residences in the commercial zone, if they go to refi and appraiser comes by and they look at the zoning, there's an issue because if there's a fire, they cannot go down and get a permit because it's a nonconforming use. It becomes an issue with the person who's gonna be holding the new mortgage. So, as Carlos brought up about the other things that implications, that is, that is another thing and a reason why I asked this is to see how many residents there were that could potentially have that.
Okay.
Based on, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Based on what information are you quoting that from?
My years as a Realtor in the state of New Hampshire and having to have homes appraised in order to have a closing and have the appraisers come down and look at the property and say the house is in a commercial zone. And what we've had to do is go to the towns and get a letter. And the letter kind of had to state, but the problem was is that nobody can make a determination as to what a, a board might do in the future. In other words, you'd have to go to the ZBA to get the approval. You can't go down, the difficulty is, is when you take a refi and you got your, your appraisal, the property's in New Hampshire, the person holding the paper is in another state and they look at it, you want me to invest in a property that's a residential property, it's in a commercial zone, and if there's a fire, my investment is not secure because they can't go get a building permit. And that's where you run into the problem. So it becomes a hardship for the person who has a home as far as their insurance, as far as their refi.
I'll just say in follow-up, we had that zoning issue last year, I just asked Carlos, EduCare on the Back Road was in here last year, and they were asking to change to commercial because they had that sort of commercial use. And they were, they came in and they indicated that they were having problems with refinancing because they'd go to the banks and nobody really knew what kind of property they were-
Correct, the rezoning.
And the rezoning was granted, was recommended by this board and it actually passed, but I remember that was a residential property that had that issue. I'm pretty sure EduCare was residential, but I'm not quite, that piece I don't remember, but I remember they needed to change to commercial for exactly those types of reasons. And actually, I think she did talk about the fire department.
Oh, yeah.
So it sounds like a remedy is possible in that situation?
I, we addressed it and it was.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna open it up to the audience for peaceful questions and pres- presentations.
Thank you.
Tied with this gentleman to my left over here. And I'll go right around the room and you'll each have an opportunity, please.
My name is Daniel Hughes, I live at Five Preston Street. I have a number of questions and kind of came tonight with an open mind. My property actually abuts what is the Bank of America building and sits directly on Mass Road.
Can Brian use the pointer to show us each of these, just-
Oh, sure.
You know, just to understand.
Would you like me to do it, Brian? No, you take that, I'm not trained in that.
Okay, so you're on Preston Street, which is, Preston Street is down here?
And my property is the very first one on Preston Street that abuts Mass Road and what is the Bank of America, so all, yeah.
Here?
Nope, the other side, right there.
Oh, so the bank, the bank is to the, as I look at that-
Just to the right of me.
Just the purple to the right, okay.
Correct. So, interestingly enough, when we received the information in the mail, this was, uh, I was very, very curious about the process because we just purchased this house five years ago, as I'm sure any of you that were on the board at the time, this development was done, it was the old Goddard Egg Farm. We purchased the original building, um, and I think when our Realtor brought us to look at it and they had built that brand-new garage in the front of it, I hopped out of the car, the first thing I said is, "An ice cream stand would go great, right there." My Realtor turned around to me and said, "There's all kinds of covenants on this property, you're not building anything there." So I have some questions and I kind of really want to hear what others in this area are thinking before I sort of make my own determination whether this is positive or negative. I wanna commend, I don't know, John, but I want to commend John for stepping off the board, giving the fact that he has a vested interest in this. That to me, I find the right decision, because again, I'm coming with a very open-minded, to see him do that shows that he's willing to have an open mind on this project as well. But my first question is, when we purchased the house at Five Preston Street, in our purchase and sale agreement, we were told the property was zoned residential. Mr. Chairman, you made the comment earlier that the zoning that is up here may or may not be totally accurate. I'm not sure that it is residential or not based on what I'm hearing tonight, and that would concern me because in our purchase and sale agreement, it says it's residential. The covenants in our purchase and sale agreement specifically say that the property can only be used, there's all kinds of covenants, but one specific covenant says that it can only be used as it's zoned. So if it's only zoned residential, you couldn't put an ice cream stand there. If it's zoned RSBO two, maybe you can, and I don't know enough about that. But as John said, this whole area eventually will become, over ten, twenty, fifty years, especially if the agricultural change for the county gets converted, will eventually all become agri- will all become commercial. So I guess my first question is, I'd like to clarify that the properties on Preston Street, whether they are RSBO dash two or whether they are some form of R two or residential, because I think that plays an impact to the people in our area.
I think the zoning map, if it says RSBO two, you are, it's not what's in the deed.
Okay, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question, is that actually what it is?
That is actually what it is.
Okay, it is RSBO two. So I guess then my next question is, why are half of the properties on the Preston Street residential and the other half RSBO two? And that may not be a question for this meeting, but, um-
I think for the same reason that the chairman indicated, he suspects Mr. Heikel picked the lots he did, it was a question of access when the recommendation was made through, for these sort of transition zones and those properties, as you've recognized right by Mass Road, have got a different potential interest in use than the properties that don't front directly on Mass Road. But I would also say to you, just like the chairman has talked about what it is, what it is on the deed-
Okay.
You know, when brokers start using the term covenants, that can mean a lot of different things. So you might have other deed restrictions that go way back to the plan approval that wouldn't be affected by any of this.
Okay.
So you probably have, you're probably got a few things going on.
Okay, um, and I'd like to, I, I probably have some more questions, but again, I'd like to be able to come up again if I could, but give other people a chance to voice their pros or cons to this, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Bill Rump, 461 Mass Road, which is the big lot, nine point eight acres.
Could you spell your last name?
Big green one.
Bill Rump, R-U-N-P-H, yes, the large green one. Bill, uh, kinda answered one of the questions I was concerned about, though the chiropractor addressed it. What's gonna happen to my insurance rate if it's commercial? He said when he, uh, got his building, he's paying eight thousand dollars insurance because it was changed to commercial. Are we gonna have to pay much higher rates for our fire insurance, homeowners? Does anyone know that?
He needs to check with a new insurance agent.
No, based on what he said, he had a big increase.
Well, it's true.
So I'm just taking him in as word.
I, I know from my own, if, a house that I'm in is, costs a heck of a lot more to insure than it would if it was a house, and there's really nothing different going on in it.
Okay. Taxes, is there a different rate for commercial traffic, uh, commercial property?
Only if you were to change the use.
Only if you were to change the use.
That's guaranteed. In other words, you can't, a year from now, say, "Well, I like commercial property, now we're gonna raise your taxes."
That's driven by the DRA, right?
Seventy-five colon one.
The State Department of Revenue Administration.
This board has no control over that.
Okay, I didn't know.
It's a state thing.
That's just what I worry about. Am I gonna have to pay more taxes? Third thing, I live next door to the antique shop out of the woods, residential area. I made the mistake of buying a dog a year ago. Every time someone closes their car door next door, it starts barking, and he barks ten to twenty times a day. Now you start putting commercial people all around these lots where people have residences, there's a lot of noise. Don't buy a dog, whatever you do, number one. But the congestion, I can't get out of my driveway from three-thirty till five o'clock at night. Right now, with everybody going in and out of Pinnardville, the traffic I expect, if we have commercial establishments there, is gonna increase. That's my only concern, I won't be around there much longer, so it doesn't matter. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm still Ivan Bellevue. I've been a Goffstown resident, I've been at that residence forty-three years, which doesn't set a particular record by any stretch, but I've seen a lot of things occur and frankly, what bothers me is I have never seen in my four decades-plus here so many houses going under, uh, empty houses. I look at the six pages of foreclosures, I know the economy is in lousy shape. It is in really lousy shape. And I think, and I understand the not-in-my-backyard philosophy that some people may want to express, I understand that. People are concerned, it's, it, it affects them directly, uh, there's not, everyone is, can't be in total agreement with this, that probability. I mean, if seventy percent approve, then maybe there's gonna be thirty percent unhappy, and it's unfortunate sometimes that that's the way it is. But it seems to me that this is a unique opportunity to solve this problem of, how are we gonna broaden our tax base, how are we gonna give some tax relief to the town? And Representative Larry Emmerton, I thought, was very profound when he mentioned our loss of businesses to, and business isn't a dirty word, by the way, by any stretch. People who own businesses can earn a living and hire others, that's the jobs things that I mentioned earlier. But I think Larry was profound that why are we losing to Huxit in Bedford? And with this natural corridor along, it's the, really the only corridor which has the utilities, has the commercial access, yes, it's not perfect, but I think this process has enough safeguards in it. It's gonna take a long time to initiate these, you could come back here and they could present two, three dozen petition articles, you know, you could nitpick those for the next two decades. But I think you have an opportunity to here to, in general, create an impression to the town that the town is going to be business-friendly, and I think that's gonna be hugely helpful for the taxpayers and it would be a huge leap for Goffstown. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board.
Thank you. Bill?
Can I stay here?
Why, is the seat softer?
I'm having trouble moving around.
Okay.
Bill Wynn, Mass Road, Goffstown. Couple of things I would like to address, and I thought Ivan brought up some excellent points. And, and Brian mentioned a transitional zone, which I will address in just a second. I have two properties and both of them happen to be involved, not involved, but- I have two properties, and both of them happen to be involved, not involved, but on these maps. And the first one I would like to take a look at, if you could back up to the Pershing Street map. And on that map, on Pretan Street, I own a townhouse, and my townhouse is in the commercial zone. But-
Forget it.
The other five townhouses are in the longer building, and they are not in the commercial, commercial zone. That's my townhouse right there, and there's two of us that are, that's a split lot when we're talking about. I've had no negative issues with regard to insurance or anything, so, never have. I've owned the property for, I think, fifteen years. And so if you can go back one more to, I think it was Memmon eight, the other property. And my other, my other property at the corner of Henry Bridge Road, also, when we talk about, Brian brought up transitional zones. We went to CIFX and directly from agricultural, and now we're talking about doing basic- Pardon? Basically doing, doing the same thing, which is going to extend along that corridor all the way up 114. So, I, when I was listening to this presentation this evening, I said, "Okay, that makes a lot of sense." And you can talk about a transitional zone until you're blue in the face, but at the same time, the situation in this particular presentation, it looks agricultural, it acts like agricultural, but the town says, in my lot in particular, moving that way, let's make it CIFX. So there it went, and I think continuing it down is an excellent opportunity for the town. I support that. So, now let's go back to where we're at today. And I thought hard and long, and I had conversations with the petitioner and some other people on this presentation, and there's only two ways people are going to be interested in these commercial properties. And the first way is, is that Joe on whatever street along Mast Road or one of those lots is going to talk to his neighbor and talk to his neighbor and say, "Hey, let's get together and just sell our three properties." Ergo, you eliminate the issues with setbacks, because now everything's going to become a bigger lot, okay? That kind of helps people out. I know that, because I've been approached. I have neighbors at the 292 location, and if you remember, there were signs along that strip, except for us, okay? There's a reason for that, but not for this forum. So, when you're looking at this, the other opportunity is a developer's going to come in and say, "Boy, we sure would like to put something here, but we need a bigger piece. We like the traffic, all the utilities are in place." And you know what? This presentation this evening, despite of the negative aspects to it, provides, and Ivan hit on it, opportunity. It provides opportunity for the town. It provides opportunity for the people who live in these properties, the people who are operating these properties that look like they're commercial properties. And I'll reference the brick building that John made, brought up. I think there's an attorney in there, an investment, whatever. It may look a little like a house, but it acts nothing like a house once you get inside the walls. And there's a number of those places along Mast Road. So, I'm in support of this. I hope the Board will be in support of it. I think it's a good planning tool. Yes, it has drawbacks, but at the same time, between now and then, the individual property owners can be faced with finding out what they need to know and their personal decision to make in the voting booth as part of this, to say, "You know what? I did find out there might be an insurance issue. I don't want to be, I'm not going to vote for it, okay?" It's not up to us here or on the Board to dictate to those people what their problems might be, except for the fact that it's an awareness issue, and it could be brought out. It may be brought out in the media, it may be brought out by investigation, but you know what? This is a good plan. Thank you.
All right, Bill. I'm going to go to the second row.
And I'm going to leave. You've got to go ahead.
Start with Jason and go left to right.
Jason Sacks, Black Brook Road.
Are you a property owner in this particular?
Do you want to go first with the property owners?
Huh?
Do you want to go first with the property owners?
No, no. Are you a, I asked the question, are you a property owner?
No, I'm not.
Black Brook Road, no, not even close.
I know.
I'm in, I'm in favor of the spirit of this article, and almost all of it, I think, is, is worth passing with one exception. And that is, if you look on the, if I can find it again, the table of dimensional regulations, and you compare the number of dwelling units per buildable acre. For RSBO two, it's eight dwelling units per acre if it's solely residential, and then it drops to six if it's mixed use. For commercial, that density goes up to fifteen and drops down to ten. So there's almost a factor of two increase of potential residential use by rezoning. And I don't mean to sound like I want to keep harping on this, but every time I go past that Rite Aid, I think this is, this was, if I'm not mistaken, this was the largest undeveloped property in Pinardville, at like fifteen or eighteen acres. And what happened to it? They got one Rite Aid. And if you look at the assessed values in town, the Shaw Shopping Mall has an assessed value of a little over thirteen million, and the drugstore is two and a half million. In my opinion, this town's screwed up, and we can't let it happen again. And to bring further opportunities for projects to come forward and say, "Well, we want to have a little bit of commercial, and it's good for the town, and it's going to be our excuse to have a whole bunch of residential property along with it." I don't believe that serves the town's tax base as a net positive tax base. And I would ask this Board, please, please, change the zoning so that we don't permit high-density residential developments when we're looking desperately for commercial development. We should be reserving that for commercial development. So, I think what this Board should do is save this for next year, or, well, recommend against this, but next year, try to find a tweak to the RSBO two zone to do whatever it takes to address any property owner who wants to have either a split residential, commercial business, or to convert to a commercial business, like the chiropractor that we heard today. Find out whatever problems they have with using their property in a commercial way in RSBO two and fix it. And keep the zone as it is, but fix any commercial limitations on these, on these properties so that we can enable commercial, commercial use of property along Mast Road in town, but not let it get wasted as a residential, high-density residential use. That's a negative impact on our tax base, because this is the only chance we have. And that Rite Aid property with the, with the housing behind it, that's almost certainly going to stay residential forever unless, you know, someone pulls a bunch of money out of their hat and turns it into commercial. So please, vote not to recommend this, but I think John has the right idea about this area. You know, find out what it takes to make this area business-friendly and do it the right way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want the black hat on?
It's blue. It's just been well-worn.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Kyle Herring, and I'm a homeowner at 26 Preston, so the back end of the cul-de-sac on Preston Street. And so I am not a owner of the properties in question, however, I am close. I feel like I am definitely affected by this potential change. I came here definitely with an open mind, because I heard about this vis-à-vis through other people. This unfortunately was not communicated to the larger area. So people who could potentially be impacted by this as well were not made aware of this. And so I'm fortunate enough to have some good neighbors who were able to, excuse me, to share this information. Came here really to understand, really to see what the change was. I understand the process of civic planning. I understand the process of evolution. I understand the process of trying to get a larger tax base into the city. But what I didn't understand is why it had to come at the cost of these fifty-one residences. Like, what, what change needs to impact? What, what would we actually serve by taking these, these properties and changing them over into a potential commercial district? I see a lot of potential flaws that really have been kind of coming out of the conversations that I've seen earlier that start with, you know, the traffic, the potential taxes, the potential insurance issues that are coming up, even just as far as the way that the properties are set. I see a lot of potential error that can come out of this. I also see a lot of potential confusion on the part of the homeowners, who may not fully understand what this change means to their property, and then again, to the people who are adjacent to that. And what happens if you look at, on Preston Street specifically, the properties, it goes three properties deep on the west side, and then two properties deep on the east side. If somebody comes in and decides to put a Rite Aid at the end of my street, what does that do for my property value, being close to that? Does that mean that I also benefit from this increase moving over into a commercial zone? Or does that mean that my property value then becomes demeaned because of the fact that I am now close without an opportunity to gain from this commercialization? I just don't see this being a well-thought-out plan. I agree with the last gentleman who spoke on the fact that this should really be tabled, this should be taken back. This should not be something that's a decision that is made on now, because there's just not enough understanding. I really believe that the input of all property owners needs to be weighed in this decision so that they clearly understand what ramifications happen to them. My biggest concern is that if this is passed by the Board and it is put out to a vote, then it goes out to the larger community of Goffstown. And of course, they are looking at that from an economic standpoint. I appreciate that. But what my concern is, is that that does not take the lives into account of the people who live on Mast Road, who have been living on Mast Road for a long time and plan on living on Mast Road for decades to come. And so my, my hope is with those, those thoughts, if you guys will consider tabling this until a time that it can be more completely thought out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I can just make a point of information for all those people here. This petition will automatically go to the public for voting. It has to go, because it was submitted by petition. So, the Planning Board cannot table the actual petition from going forward. The Planning Board will vote to either recommend or not recommend the petition article, and then voters will decide on what they want to do with it.
And then my support goes for, obviously, don't support this. The last thing that I wanted to mention is also, if you look at the signatures on the petition, outside of the petitioner himself, and I think one other person, there were only two signatures from residences on Mast Road itself. And so obviously, that's indicative of the support that's coming. It's not all the way up and down Mast Road that people are supporting this. I mean, we have a few isolated individuals. I don't think this is a, a universal support for this bill, and so we need to understand it more.
Okay.
Ask your question.
I'm going to go through and come back to you.
Want to ask a question about me?
No, you're next.
I'm next. Good evening. My name is Robert Johnson, and I own that little piece of property, that greenish-blue one. Lot 2197. That's one, up, 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 right there.
That one.
That's the one you're questioning about. My wife has a little business, Anna's Window Box. Is this on TV? Because she never opens. I don't want to go home and- Let's hope she doesn't watch it, because I'm dead when I get home. Anyhow, she never opens, and so we got a business, but like I say, and I'm B.J. Johnson and son, but I don't advertise out there, but I have a small business. I've been approved on both businesses. My question is, first of all, if we do go commercial, will our taxes go up?
No.
Good. Second, because where I have the two little businesses there and I get residential, if I sell my house to my children, or deed it to my children, will there be any problems at that time if I sell, deed it to my children? Is that to rezone, or why? They're still residential? Or if the house burns down, can I build back on that property residential? Because I only have basically maybe one fifteenth of the property for business.
If the house burns, there's typically a one-year period of time where a house can be rebuilt without having to meet the commercial zone regulations. That's if it burns. If it's taken down, or if, you know, if the, if the property owners demolish it for whatever reason, then it automatically has to meet the new regulations in the commercial zone.
Okay. I'm sixty-eight, and my kids would like to take over the house and kind of put me off. The little two bedrooms on the side, you know, which put me off the pasture, my wife and I, but hey. I know. Get rid of that first. But will that create a problem, because it's still zoned commercial if we add on to my house, as a residential house?
Additions would have to be reviewed. I couldn't give an answer on that right now.
I understand that. So I'd have to go before the Board, okay? I mean, I do really like, enjoy Goffstown, the little town hall, the police department, the fire, everybody's so friendly. I mean, you can't beat a bit of talent in this. Everybody knows you by your first names. I mean, and I would like to see, and John is my neighbor, you know, and I would like to see him be able to, if he could, have a small business there. My other concern is, where's the stipulation of what goes in these property? Like, another gas station, or is there any, you guys would have to decide that, what you allow on these properties once a person decides to sell his property and tear it down, a commercial?
There is a table of allowances in the zoning ordinance. And so what you can do in that particular zone, once it's rezoned, and it's fairly extensive.
I know, because on my deed, like you said, she said in my deed, "I can't put a gas station." I own three-quarters of an acre, plus a pool that I would love to bury, but I can't. But I own three-quarters of an acre there, so she says, "No gas station," which is fine with me. Okay, so that answers my question. Thank you very much, and I hope everything goes well for you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Barbara?
I'd just like to comment on the answer about the assessment. Because it is not, and I am not the tax assessor, but I need to tell you that it is my understanding that the assessment of a business in a commercial property would be different than essentially a home occupation that is approved. So, I don't have the definitive answer, but I, I just would be hesitant to leave a definitive no on the record for Mr. Johnson, because I, I don't know that that is absolutely correct. Because if it became a commercial business, if it became a commercial property and there's a business on it, I think it might get treated differently. That's all I'm going to throw out there. I don't think it's an absolute. If you're in a house, it's, there's nothing commer, then it wouldn't have an impact.
Well, if you change it to a commercial use, I believe your assessment would change.
Can I just, 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 just for the record and so that we don't get into any issue, what I would suggest is that Mr. Johnson go have a meeting with the assessor. Ask the assessor that question, because that would be specific to your property. Because that type of a question that you're asking here, we really can only answer on a general basis. Every property is going to be different to the use and the way it's laid out and what's there. So, to be fair for you and everybody else, if anybody has that question, I would suggest that they go to the assessor, make an appointment, sit down with him, and ask him the question that if this zoning goes through and my property is zoned, the zoning has changed from whatever it is now to this, what impact will that have on my tax, on my taxes? So, thank you very much. Thank you.
A gentleman right here.
My, my question-
No, no, behind you. There's a, there's a whole house full of people here before you get to speaking against me.
Good evening. My name is Ray Lord. I live on 464 Mast Road, next to the property that people call the brick building. I used to be a real estate agent when I first moved there. I am one of the people that signed the petition. My own, I do have a question, because I've listened differently, and you had made the statement and said that you have a year to rebuild if a house burns.
That is correct.
No, okay, I was just, because I heard that if, maybe I missed the fact that it was torn down, but I thought somebody had mentioned something about a house burning, and you had to turn around and get a variance. You're saying you do not have to do that.
You have, there's a time limit on that.
Of a year to rebuild, so that, that would not, as long as you don't change the use of your property, then that would be okay. I had a, there was a business in the house at one time. I am zoned for that. I think some of the problem is, is that I've been here twenty-two years, and Goffstown doesn't have a lot of places to go because of infrastructure. Mast Road does offer to a commercial base. Mast Road does offer to a commercial base. The other problem is, is that somebody brought up the riot aid. I think the other thing that we're doing here is we're looking too small. In order for you to bring in more small businesses, you need a big business. You need an area where people can say, I could take up eight or 10 lots and put in something larger. Because larger is gonna pull in other businesses. It's natural. Small businesses will work, but they're a lot harder. So you like Mast Road we have now is a fairly, you know, compact area, but if you look, it's a bunch of small businesses. Or we have a daycare, we had a hair shop, we had a hair removal, different things. That's not, you know, gonna bring in what you really need for the town to help support your tax base. You need to bring in a large, you know, scale project that's gonna really help the tax base, because it's killing people right now. So I think that this area allows that because the way some of these properties are set up, you can group, I know in my case probably eight or 10 properties together and take a whole section. And that would lend to, you know, a bigger development, which I think would help bring in other things.
So just if I can, Mr. Chair, for clarification, you're in that little pocket that includes the residential homes?
I am, yes. I border the, basically to the right of me and the brick building is the entrance to Timberwood. So from Timberwood basically all the way back to 114 could be taken as a fairly substantial piece of property. Which may lend, because you have the I-93 corridor, they're expanding Route 3, Bedford's in certain areas on South River Road are growing. Everything's growing around you, but if you look at what's going in, it's a larger scale. It's not a riot aid or it's not a mom and pop restaurant. It's a huge car dealership, it's a Target, it's a Lowe's, things of that scale. You don't want to change the format of the town, but Pinnardville and Goffstown Center have always been almost like a feud. Pinnardville's Pinnardville, Goffstown's Gofftown. And I think that, you know, if you, you can't really do anything in the center of town because it doesn't lend it. That would become a traffic issue. Here you have plenty of access and you certainly have all the utilities that would be required. But that's the reason why I was for it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next row back. Woman on the left?
We got somebody coming on down.
Okay, come on down.
If I've been sitting back there, you might as well come on down.
I'm glad they could bring people to Town Hall.
Please, please.
Probably we got an audience.
My name is Thomas Walsh. I live at 465 Mast Road, which is the antique shop. We bought the property nine years ago for the traffic count on Mast Road. And I think that's the key in this whole thing, is that road has what, 6, 8,000 traffic count on it a day through that section through? And we're not gonna change that. It's, so it's the only natural place for this to happen. And it's gonna happen whether it's piece by piece in the future or it's this proposal. I'm for it. I look at it and I can see other, it's my residence and the antique shop. And I can see where some people might be hesitant to it, but it's not gonna happen all at once. It's gonna be small businesses moving into these houses at a relatively slower pace, especially in this economy. But sooner or later, I believe that it will happen in this stretch and that's why we bought the property nine years ago. So I am for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Can't tell which row you're sitting in back there, so you're gonna have to figure it out back there yourself.
Thank you for hearing me. My name's Jason Julian. I live on Nine Terrace Lane, which is right in that little yellow section. We're seven houses on a one dead-end street. This is my first meeting and I know nothing about the zoning ordinances and I've been listening and I've been questioned, I have a lot of questions. I know you got, some of them have been answered, some of them probably can't. It seems like there's a lot of details that myself personally are, you know, unaware of on what this means for me. When I bought my home, I, you know, I spent 10 years looking for where I wanted to live and with my family and, you know, for my kids to grow up. And I chose Gofftown in that area. I had suspicion that, you know, that's a great place to throw a gas station or some, you know, major, you know, sectionway, but I didn't think that would happen, at least while I was here. I'd have to say, I kind of, I guess I oppose it. I understand you guys are in the, looking out for the best interest of Gofftown, what's happening, but I guess I didn't understand what the future is, what the projected future for, you know, this area is. I mean, is Gofftown looking to create a mirror image of South Willow Street in Manchester? Is that the town goal? So these are questions that I have. And I don't plan on selling my home and the seven neighbors that I have that unfortunately some of them are elderly and can't make it around that easy. They, you know, they don't plan on going anywhere either. One of them just actually bought their house this past summer on my street. So I guess I'm gonna have to, I oppose it and I hope, you know, you guys will, the board will kind of take these things on a consideration, that it is a residential area, but if that's the outlining goal, I don't have anybody, you know, shell oil or nobody's knocking on my door right now to, you know, make me an offer. I wouldn't plan on selling my home unless they offered me twice what I owe. So that's just my stance on it as of right now. If I can be convinced otherwise, maybe, you know, I change my mind, but, so, thank you for hearing me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, sir? Yes? Would you like to come up?
Good evening. My name's Michael O'Sullivan and I live in Timberwood, actually. The reason I'm here basically is that for many years, say 25 years, I lived on the corner of McQuigged and Mast Road. My son now owns the house. He wasn't able to be here and he asked me if I'd come to the meeting. I see this rezoning to commercial is adversely affecting the property values of everybody that has a residence here. Many people have paid mortgages for 20, 30 years. I paid a mortgage for 25 years. That lot that's probably too small to develop into a commercial venture. You could say that people might get together and put three or four lots together, but there's always a butter who isn't involved with it, whose property values will go down. Even, even now, if you tried to sell your house with it being zoned commercial, who would want to be a taker with it as far as a home to live in when there's a possibility a McDonald's could pop up next to you? I think it's very detrimental to the people that live here and for years that maintain properties here, paid mortgages, paid taxes. And for the road to be further impeded with commercial traffic, it seems unreasonable. Anybody that drives or has, has facility with Mast Road, as I do a lot, the only, I've heard riot aid mentioned so many times, the only thing I have to say about that is the set of lights that are there. To me, is, if it comes further down the road, you might as well try to another, try to build another road to get to the village or the Manchester area. I see absolutely no reason to do this at this time. The properties that are there, there are properties available at Shaw's Plaza that are retail properties. There is, there's properties such as the one that DeAngelo's left that stands there still unoccupied, nobody, no takers seeming. I just don't see what the pressure is here unless there's some agenda that we don't, that I don't know about and it's not being forthcoming. The whole idea of this is just very suspicious to me and particularly in the presenter or the petitioner, who lives in this area and has some interest in getting this done. I have no idea, but I think it's a real detriment to the people that have loaned homes here, that have paid mortgages, that have paid taxes, that hopefully will be able to sell this, their properties if they need to, and not under the, under the burden of commercial. That's all I can say. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Gentleman with the green baseball cap, would you like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bob Philibird. I live at 511 Mast Road. And my house is a single house, but it's a double deep lot. And on the right of me, there's houses that are doubles on the single lots. Now, later on, if I want to put a house back there and I'm zoned commercial, I'm doomed, right? I can't do it.
Correct. Not without a variance.
Not without a variance. So I don't.
You couldn't do it now without a variance.
Right.
Right.
But if it's not zoned commercial, it'd be a lot easier, wouldn't it?
I'm not gonna predict what ZBA is gonna do, but you'd still have to get a variance.
Right. Even a garage, if I wanted to put a garage back there and it's zoned commercial, I'd have to put sprinklers in and all that to be commercial?
I'm not so sure about that one. That's a fire department issue.
Oh.
Fire department likes sprinklers.
Yeah, right. Zone commercial, I'm sure. Ah, that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen with the other baseball cap in the back.
Really want me to come up, huh?
Well, you're sitting back there and you've been very quiet and patient.
Been quiet, sure.
Why?
No, I'm Tim Kilar. I'm here on behalf of my mother on 516 Mast Road.
Could you spell your last name?
K-I-L-A-R.
What's your address on Mast Road?
516, Corner Catherine in Mass.
Are you one of the property, is your mother one of the properties?
She's the owner. I'm a trustee of the trust.
Okay.
Right here? Where's the other one?
Uh, right there. Yep.
Oh, Catherine.
My initial thought on this process was, you know, it's like, all right, hey, I could maybe make some money on it. But that property and corresponding to that neighborhood impacts, you know, I own my own business in Ware and I have a cabinet shop up there. If I could bring that here under current zoning laws, which I guess you're, I could bring my shop there and I could turn on my saw at 7:00 in the morning. Who's the guy that said they didn't like the dog? No one's gonna like me. You know? I'm just saying is that property with all these other properties abutting it, I just, it's not a good marriage. The cops are gonna be down that, you know, come visiting, hey, what are you doing at 7:00 o'clock in the morning opening up a table saw? All right, that's just me. I don't know, you know, you have another business abutting a residential. I just, I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense, you know? Progress, you can't stop progress. But my take is, as a property owner, I should have a say when I want to do my change over to commercial or when I, if I want to stay residential. And that's brought to you guys here, you know, as far as when and if I want to do it with my property. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right in the back, blue baseball cap, or do you already speak? There's four or five quiet people back there. Please come forward, one at a time.
You can't all really be that quiet.
Oh, they've been very patient.
I know, they have. Usually by now, they're chomping at the bit.
Hello. My name is Michael Turcutt. I live on TaxMap 21 Lot 110. It's a non-conforming lot. You want to point it out, you can. I have 15 feet of road frontage.
Where is it again?
110.
Is it on Mast Road?
It is. Let me, uh...
Is it this one here?
It is.
Yeah.
That's it, right there. Now, we moved here 25 years ago, but I remember coming, I'm an inner-city Manchester kid, but I remember going out to Francis Town fishing with my older brother and passing through this one section of Goffstown when I was a young boy. And it always impressed me that it had these tall pine trees and it kind of set itself apart from Manchester. Now, we're out in the country. And as funny as that seems, I think that it still has that appeal when you pass Shaw's, you come into this part of town that's just, you know, different from the rest of it. Now, I understand progress and when we moved here 25 years ago and we've had four children, I imagine that this might happen, but only in reverse. I always imagined that if this area was ever gonna get developed, that a consumer, an industry, Home Depot would come in and try to buy up seven or eight lots. Sort of like what happened at the airport in Manchester when they developed Route 28 or whatever that is. I have a cousin that lives in that area and they had, they were approached, they were a residential area and all of that developed the way that it did. Unlike this, to me, is backwards. There are plenty of undeveloped lots all along Daniel Plummer Road, in Pinnardville itself. Those areas, I think, need to be developed. If this area is ever gonna be developed commercially, I've heard other people say it here before, it has to be an anchor, a bigger business. Think bigger. Think the entire area. All of the residential side streets need to be consumed in this way of thinking, or not at all. When we moved here, I thought this might happen someday. I imagined it would. In the last five years, we've put over $150,000 into our house because we imagine that this is where we want to bring up our grandchildren. So, because we have a nice private lot back there, we're gonna be choked. If this plan happens the way that it's proposed, with little mom and pop and, you know, a breakfast diner or whatever you can do on a 50 by 100 lot or a couple 50 by 100 lots together, piecemealing, I just think that we're gonna be choked. And I'm asking the board that you don't recommend this article.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Dave Raymond. I live at One Terrace Lane, which is right almost at the corner of 114 and Mast Road. I would recommend that the board not recommend this particular amendment for several reasons. First, based on what the town planner said, there are many flaws in just the application or the petition itself. You know, leaving out lots in the middle of all this seems kind of like a big detail to me. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I hope it's got, you know, a big detail. Couple of other things is people mentioned that this brick building has offices in it. I believe that's the correct usage for that building. Is that correct? I mean, isn't that building being used the way it's supposed to be? I mean, that's the purpose of the zoning for that particular area.
There was a residence, it was.
Quite a while.
Right. But it is, but that's the reason that this was all set up as IRSBO, to encourage that particular type of activity in this area. And it looks like it's working, it sounds like it's working. There are residents and small businesses together in this area. That also gives the homeowner an option. When they sell the property, it could be used as a residence, it could be used as a small business. If this is all changed to commercial, your option will be limited to one. It'll be commercial. You will not be able to sell it as a house. You'll be able to sell it as, it'll be commercial property. So to me, it sounds like you're restricting the homeowner's choice as opposed to enhancing it. And the other question is, why now? I moved here about 17, 18 years ago and the discussion then, as it is now, is we need more commercial tax base. Property taxes is too high. We don't have enough businesses to offset some of the residential tax rates. But the county land's been there for 20 years. Mast Road's been there for 20 years with all the utilities built in. So I'm just questioning, why now? And looking at the petition, again, I only got four signatures on my, on the copy I was sending in the mail. And to find out that none of the other signatures are from anyone who lives near the area is a bit suspicious, as someone else mentioned, that there isn't a project already in the works. And again, someone said, you know, talking about transparency and keeping things open. And again, someone said, you know, talking about transparency and, and keeping things open. It sounds like there's something already in the works. And what, what, if it is, that's fine. But it would be nice to know what it is. And to find out that there's, there's almost no other people from this area out of fifty, fifty properties that have signed the petition, uh, it, again, is very suspicious. So, for those reasons, I would ask that the, um, the board not, excuse me, not recommend this, uh, petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have some people in the back that would like to speak. Please step forward, one at a time.
Hi. How you doing? I'm Jim Garzinski, representing the Simon Garzinski Irroccable Trust on 471 Mass Road.
Can you, can you point out which one that is? I'm not familiar with it.
It's, uh, right next to the antique shop.
It's gonna be one of these.
Okay.
Yep, right on Mass Road.
Alright. The, the, the residents?
Yes. Well, actually, small business and office district. And, um, we've lived there for thirty years or more. And I've seen things come and go and I've seen a lot of businesses actually be, being chased out of the town of Goffstown. A couple of good friends of mine. And, um, I see that property now wants to be turned into commercial property. I guess I just wanted to say that. Also, um, Brian over here, he was talking about, um, the, uh, fire insurance on a building if you burnt it down and you only had a year to rebuild it. That is a law, I believe. And, um, just to let you know, I do have a friend of mine that is in court with a building that had burnt down. It's been burnt down for three years and it's still sitting there. It's all fenced in. They're fighting with the town right now to rebuild that place back as it was. You know, they, they don't, you have to get a variance to rebuild the building to whatever you want to do with the town.
Is that in Gofftown?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But I just wanted to bring that forward, you know? Because it, it could be an issue if somebody's house did burn down and so on and so forth, because it is tied up in court. I also like to say that, um, uh, let me see here. I was disagreeing with Mr. Dickle over here. Um, he's saying that the, uh, changing from, uh, small business and office district, district, uh, zoning to a commercial zoning wouldn't have any change or effect on the, on the people's property. I look at, uh, as it sits right now in my, in my area where I live, Timberwood Estates, a big condominium across the street. When that first was developed over there, that, the building you can see from Mass Road was not supposed to be able to be seen from the town of Gofftown and it is able. And, uh, they built a number of buildings back there and they disallowed to build, uh, other buildings what they already had the foundations poured for. I don't think Gofftown's following, you know, what goes on really close or really enforces a lot of things that happen around. Myself, I've spent a lot of money with different attorneys and, um, uh, things I've gone through at my parents' piece of property over there. And it's been a kind of a hardship for me. And, um, now we have, uh, uh, you know, a piece of property that was quick, quick claimed deed to us. Uh, we quick claimed it and they put a piece of, of building on it. And, um, they use it as an illegal driveway coming in and out of there and the developer sold it. And, um, the antique shop over there, he's done a number of things too and there's also right next door on, uh, Mass Road, right next to Timberwood's entrance over there, there's a building, uh, a house over there that's stripping cars over in a couple of days. And I know I spoke with Brian about it, you know, and different things. But I think that before Gofftown really makes a decision on what to do or what is allowed into the commercial zoning and I'm not against it, I'm not saying I'm for it, but they should really look at it and see what's, what people are going to really do because, I mean, I, when the antique shop went in there in the first place, uh, uh, they were supposed to be closed down at five o'clock at night and, um, they're running a, a school in there at nighttime. And I see that turning into a flea market really, really soon. I just figured I'd need to bring all this forward.
Okay.
That's about all I have to say.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One more.
Alright. Make it count.
My name's Rick Trudeau and, um, I live at 515, 513 Mass Road. It's a deep lot. I am the person with two houses on one lot that you heard about earlier. You know, when I got the letter, I went and talked to my tenants, because I rent these two houses out now. And I said, you know, what's your impression of this? And their impression is, is, well, we live here because it's residential. We don't want to wake up to a Walmart or a Market Basket. So, I guess all I really, and I see a lot of my neighbors here who are also residential. And I guess I just want to convey that I think it should stay residential and not commercial. And I think everybody else has made, you know, good reasons for that at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, have I missed anybody? I have, but there's been somebody who haven't spoke, but I'm assuming they don't want to speak. Ma'am?
I got one question. That I would, when I called in to find out what this meeting was, there was a petition that we could sign and not in favor of this. Is that true or false?
No, there's no petition to, to-
No, that's called a protest.
Protest petition.
There's a protest petition process and they should be able to explain it to you in the clerk's office? Town clerk's office, in which if you get enough signatures by a certain particular time and you present it to the clerk's office, it means the number of votes that are needed to pass it becomes like a super majority because you've got on record enough signatures in opposition. It's called a protest petition. Doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah, no, she led me to believe that one. Maybe it was how I interpreted it that it was going to be here.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a separate thing and it has to do with the vote and you can do it for any, pretty much any petition, any article.
Thank you.
Is there a time period for that? Is there a, uh?
Yes.
Yeah, there are time periods for it. I need names of these people who are speaking. I could, can't.
A gentleman that just spoke, could you give me your name, please?
Tim Keeler, K.I.L.A.R.
He was before.
He spoke before.
Oh, I know that.
Very last one.
I just can't always remember them. One of the ones from before.
Do you want it? This gentleman wants to speak again.
Again, I wanted to kind of listen to everything and I had some, I had a question and then I have comments, I guess. Um, again, my name is Daniel Hughes, 5 Preston Street. Um, I guess my first question is, and it was brought up and I asked the question when I called the clerk. And to say the clerk was absolutely wonderful and gave us information about the petitions and what all was available to us. And it's the second time I've had to call the town for something and get detailed information. And I've been absolutely amazed, living here six years, how much, how helpful the town officials are and the people that work for the town in providing. She spent forty-five minutes with me on the phone, so, and you wouldn't expect that, so. Passing along what a great job they do. But my question is, it was brought up earlier and she said this too, that the petition is going on to the ballot regardless. Um, the discussion here is to vote whether you guys are in favor, whether the board is in favor or not in favor of it. My question on that is, can John, based on what he's heard tonight or based on whatever reason, can he withdraw the petition, have it removed from the ballot? Or now that it's been made, it's automatically on? Even if he were to turn around tonight and say, you know, after listening, you guys think this is a terrible idea. I don't want it on there. It's on there no matter what.
Correct.
Okay. Given that, I wanted to point out a couple of things. When we bought out, when we bought the house on Preston Street, it was in, I want to say, November of two thousand and five. Near the beginning of what everybody realizes now was the downturn, but what the perception at the time was really the peak of the bubble. We bought our house for two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Its listing price at the time was two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and it started out at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So, at the time where you couldn't put an offer in on a house and have a shot at getting it, this house was being lowered in price over and over and over again. We absolutely loved the house. It's, it's beautifully done inside. It was the old Godhead Egg Farm House. They did a wonderful job renovating it. We fell in love with the house the second we saw it. We had to look to the right and see a Shaw's, a Dunkin' Donuts, a Pizza Hut, a Bank of America. We made that choice to say, we're okay living across the street from Subway. We're okay living across the street from Pizza Hut. My kids love the fact that McDonald's is within walking distance of the facility. So, there were a lot of selling features for us. That being said, I can certainly, and we made that choice and, and I'm very okay with it, but we had the option to make that choice. By doing this, you now put somebody in the situation where Dunkin' Donuts or some building or something with lights, I mean, they put the daycare up. And if you're ever inclined, come to Preston Street and park in my driveway at about five-thirty right now, when those cars pull into that driveway, and I have high beams facing my house for probably a good, from five to six-thirty. It's the most frustrating thing in the world, but it's there. So, you kind of deal with it. Now, all of a sudden, you have lights on houses, you have, or lights on buildings. You have all these different things that you have to deal with because somebody put a commercial property next to your residential property. So, as I'm looking at this and I'm listening to everybody, and, and I absolutely agree with John and I agree with Ivan, that you need these development projects. And, and I want to thank Brian for doing him the order that he did, because I had no idea what was going on with the Hillsborough County facility space. So, to me, to know that there's a good probability that two hundred and fifty commercial acres are about to open up, I don't know that we need to take the fifty-one houses here and make them commercial as well. I actually think through natural attrition, those people will get together. I'm disappointed that John never came to me and said, hey, you have a property that's a butt's a commercial property, faces Mass Road. Let me tell you what my vision is. Let me tell you what I'm thinking. He may have gotten me on board or at least my response would have been, let's get all these people together and start talking about it. Maybe we can bundle groups of three and position six pockets where you could put a decent-sized building. But given what we're seeing, given what everybody's talking about, I'm going to ask you guys very strongly to oppose, um, this recommendation to do this. I, I think the vision is phenomenal. I think what's going on in the other part of town is phenomenal. I think there's a lot of real advantage to what's going on. I don't think we need to take these fifty-one properties. If, if Brian and I assume your number's right, fifty-one properties are affected here. When I drove home tonight from work and I work on the west side of Manchester, trying to do a quick count, there are at least twelve vacant properties between King Lanes and where the Shaw's is, where commercial property could go into existing commercial buildings already. That's doing the math, roughly twenty-five percent of what's in here. So, why would somebody go in and try to jam a commercial business into a residential spot when we have twelve vacant properties just sitting there, plus now two hundred and fifty acres that could be developed up here? So, given all that, given what happened to the value of my house, I would suspect what happened to the value of other people's houses, the difference is they're not given a choice. So, I'm going to strongly ask you guys to not recommend this proposal based on what a lot of the feedback was. And I really wish there was a way John could remove this petition and we could look at something else, because I think there's some great opportunities to develop some of these properties. And if the people want to group together and come to you, I would encourage them to do that. And I would encourage the board to support them as groups. Um, so that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I am going to assume that everybody's had their opportunity to speak. You had an opportunity. Has it, has it been something different? I want to hear it again.
I noticed something, uh, a mistake on the map. You've got twenty-one, twenty-nine, which is John Nichols' property and the house in back of it. And you've got the same numbers on it and it's got the, the line going through a piece of property dividing the two.
Twenty-nine dash one.
Twenty-nine, four, dash nine?
Twenty-nine dash one. That lot was split off from the backyard of my house.
That's in that road though, right?
Huh?
That one's in that road.
The one is in the road. Yeah, the one is a, there's a dash and then there's a one after the twenty-nine.
Well, maybe my ink is not as good then. Or I'm blotched more or something. I looked at the magic pointer last and I saw that, yeah, that's it. I better bring that to the public.
Okay. I think, I think the line is in the right place.
Yeah, it is. I was just looking at the twenty-one.
Alright. John, you have a few minutes to speak and then I'm gonna-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, this has been a, a pretty enlightening, uh, conversation. I can tell you that for about three weeks, um, and, and I, and I guess two points, well, several, uh, a few points on the, uh, tax issue from RSBOD to commercial, RSA seventy-five colon eleven, call the Commissioner of DRA, talk to Linda. She'll explain to you that your taxes will not be affected on that change. If you sell this house and, to somebody that wants to buy this house, um, the change has not, there has not been a change made, um, you don't have to sell it as commercial. Second of all, you don't have to sell it, period, if you choose not to. Thirdly, would you believe that I pulled in your driveway and knocked on your door, but nobody answered it? And would you also believe that you-
Sure, I'll believe it now.
Yeah, I had, I had my high beam. But anyway, I would ask the board, uh, and I understand the passionate, uh, the passionate testimony on both sides of this. I'm here to ask the board to recommend it, uh, for the, for the ballot. The, uh, Goffstown Industrial Corp supports it. They sent letters out to everyone as well. Um, they are a leader and you heard, uh, Mr. Emmerton and, and, and they work closely, uh, with development of different properties in town. So, um, thank you and thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's, it's been a great experience. But I do recommend that you, uh,
Thank you.
Recommend this to the, to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to technically close the public hearing.
Okay, go.
So, one, two, three, four. Brian, we started with which one?
I started with Hillsborough County.
County home. Hillsborough County. What's the board's pleasure? We'll limit the discussion so that we can move things forward. But I'll go around the room and I'll ask if anybody has a comment.
No comment.
Steve?
No comment.
Hollis?
No comment.
Barbara?
No comment.
Mark?
No comment.
John, you can vote on this one. We're, we're doing Hillsborough County.
Are you looking for a motion?
No, I'm just looking if anybody has a comment. Phil? Okay, seeing no comments, I'd like to have a, a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion that we, um, recommend this article, petitioned article. Second.
Second by?
Carl.
Carl.
Okay, seconded by Carl. Any discussion on that motion? Then, uh, first to vote is Steve.
No, it's, it's Carl on this one. That's why he's seconded it. Sorry, I voted on the last.
Okay, alright. So, Carl this time. Hollis in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstent? One nay. Chair votes positive.
I think it's a good idea and I wish it had been broken up by law, like Jason, like, um, it was raised by a member of the public. I think we have a couple of articles on here that are good ideas. I just don't like how they're presented. And so, that's my issue. It is, they are big changes for which, once these are changed, you have very little control over what happens. So, I would have liked to have seen a little line through one of the lots on the county land. So, that's why.
Six. Six to one. Six, one, zero. Six, four, one against and no abstentions. Number two. Is the-
Our Parker Station historic.
Parker Station. I have more piles here than I know, want to know what to deal with. Okay. Going around the room, members of the board. Carl?
You asking for discussion?
Yep.
The way it's presented, it almost looks like we're, we're approving a subdivision. Where we create, or we're just creating a, a, a zone fictitious, not fictitious, but a zoning line.
That's, that's, that's all it is.
That's all it is.
There's no subdivision involved.
It just says new boundary, but that's just for the zone itself.
Zone boundary would change, but that's it.
And I, it was my understanding, and apparently it was a mistake. And I, I thought the proposed line was, because does this lot currently have two access points to Mass Road?
Which lot?
Seven, dash sixty-four. I'm sorry.
Yes, on the other side, they do have-
Parsons Drive.
Is that the one that connects to- Right, yes. The, the parcel itself does have a right-of-way to Parsons Drive, I believe. Right of right-of-way.
The end of the cul-de-sac, there's a right-of-way that goes through the end of the cul-de-sac to access.
This seven sixty-four does have two frontages on Mass Road.
On Mass Road.
So, the, the meaning, when they came in previously, I, I was on the, the understanding that the lot, the line, the new line was going to go from the, the northeast corner of seven sixty-three to the northwest corner of seven sixty-five. That was my understanding, but apparently that was a mistaken statement.
That they were actually changing the line.
Right, but that, that, that would be the new, is new line itself.
Right.
Instead of having both. Right, exactly. Because they, by doing this, it'll give, it'll still allow them to have two access points off Mass Road.
Correct.
Okay.
Steve?
So, ju- just to follow up on that, this, this proposed-
So, just to follow up on that, this, this proposed change is just shifting the boundary over, shortening the historic district?
Moving the zoning line over, the historic district zoning line over to a specific spot on the site.
Okay. Historic district is an overlay district, and that's one of, it's described in our zoning ordinance legally with, you know, all the legal language that you use to describe land, and so the proposed language of this amendment re-describes that area of this lot to be, that's part of the, of the district. So, if that wasn't...
I think that makes sense. So, instead of being at the, at the edge of the lot line, now it's going to be 306 feet from the edge of the lot line.
Right, right.
I'm good.
Yeah, no further comment?
Barbara?
I sort of thought we already dealt with this issue in previous years, so I don't really quite understand.
I probably thought the same thing, but we're back at it.
It sounded like the property owner was in favor of this. He asked for it, and he's been overly regulated in the past, according to his testimony, so I'm in favor of this and support the petitioner.
John?
Yeah, I support the petitioner on this.
Phil?
I have no comment.
Do you have to recuse yourself since you...
No.
No, I have a comment.
I'm only asking on the vote.
No.
Okay. All right, then it's Steve this time. No further comments? Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Did you say no also?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
What?
I was saying no, too. So, it's 4-3.
Who else said no, though? I didn't hear any...
I didn't hear Barbara vote.
Carlos, Ellen, and who else said no? I was going to abstain, actually, because I just don't even get why we're still at this. So, what is that? So, we have Steve, Carlos, 331.
331.
331.
So, it appeared...
What was the motion?
Ty loses.
To...
To recommend.
331. Well, to recommend.
Doesn't pass.
Recommend.
It's not recommended. Didn't, didn't pass.
Well, that motion didn't pass. However, do we have to still make a motion in the...
We can't change the petition.
Opposite direction?
Can't change the petition. You can change, we can have a revote, we can vote again.
No, you can make a motion to not recommend.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I'll make a motion to not recommend.
Clarification?
Yeah.
So, it could say on the ballot, recommended by the planning board, or no recommendation, or if what Barbara's saying right now...
No.
No.
Recommend against it?
It has to say either not recommended or recommended.
One or the other.
And the vote has to be posted, too.
Correct.
Right.
So, 331, isn't that not recommended?
It goes down. Ty goes down.
So, how does that go?
Why do we need to do anything?
Yeah, so how does it go on the ballot, then, actually? I don't know how it goes on the ballot, then. Not recommended?
The vote was to recommend it, but there was three noes and abstention.
I think that motion just doesn't pass.
Well, that's not a motion to not recommend, that's not a motion to not recommend it.
Right. The motion doesn't pass in any form, so...
Right.
Right.
I think there still needs to be a vote that passes on this, whether it be to recommend or not recommend. Somebody, you know, if somebody wants to discuss this some more and, and, you know, iron out some issues, change a vote, maybe, whatever, then, you know, we might need to do that.
Well, I'll make a motion to not recommend.
Is there a second?
Can you make a motion in the negative? You can, okay.
I'll sec...
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Seconded by Steve. Any discussion on that motion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Phil?
I'm abstaining.
The chair votes yes. The motion to deny is 4-2-1.
Not, not to deny, but to not recommend.
Not to recommend. Okay. Number four.
Number three, which is 4 Piercing Street, map 18, lot four, motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Can I just ask a clarification?
Certainly.
Can, would you consider the motion to recommend, providing the petition is...
Well, legitimate petition, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that's an administrative thing that's going to be dealt with regardless.
Well, I just don't want it to fall through the cracks.
That's true of any of these petitions.
I understand that administratively, if this is deemed invalid, then...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's per view of this board.
Okay. Yes.
Clarification, I don't know if you answered it, my question, can you make a motion in the negative?
To not recommend?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
That's what just happened with Barbara.
I understand that. I just wanted to make sure from the chair that you can make a motion.
Yeah, the planning, it has to go on one way or the other, onto the ballot.
So, any discussion? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, there is.
To recommend?
Yeah.
And seconded?
Mm-hmm.
Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0-0. Amendment 11 is the changing of the RSBO2 to R, and R2 to commercial on Mass Road properties.
I'll move to recommend that.
We're here a second. Chair seconds it. Any discussion?
I'm totally in favor of more commercial for the town. I think we all understand that. I just don't think this is the avenue we should be taking at this point. I would rather have seen maybe some type of committee be formed, and all the residences in this area be, you know, just be more involved. I think it's just a little bit scattered, that's my, that's my comment.
Steve?
I agree with Carl. I, I think that's right. I also have some concerns with the way it's, it's written. I don't think that, based on what we heard tonight, that this change is consistent with the, the use on a great deal of the lots, and I think some of the concerns that Brian brought up about the non-conforming lots that would result from this, and the, the leftover island and the like are an issue as well.
Okay. Carlos?
I would agree. I think the concept has merit, but I think there's too many unanswered questions. I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight from the public with questions that are unanswered, and I don't think it's ready for, for primetime yet.
Barbara?
I have nothing different to add.
Okay. Mark?
I think that this conversion to commercial would give a number of homeowners, property owners, the potential for higher values, and I think it's easier to do it all at once than 51 separate times.
That I would agree with.
Phil?
Well, I was involved with the original RSBOD, the development of that district, and when it first went on, working with the residents, and I believe what we should do is take a look at the entire area, work with the residents on the property owners within that area, and have a discussion with them and come up with a plan. Some of those that are commercial or should be commercial, some of them would probably want to be abutted by an RSBOD, so I think there's, there's a bit of work that we need to. The RSBOD was intended to be a buffer also between commercial and residential, so...
Okay. Any other further comments?